Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Oyster River School Board. If you would like to please, your means for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because we have a couple of parents involved in this meeting who would like to attend their children's concert, which is taking place down the hall, I would like to change and move the Assistant Superintendent's right after a public comment. And before we do public comment, there's something that Megan has to say.
I'm Megan Turnbull, Oyster River School Board member. I understand that my email could be interpreted as contrary to the right to know law.
Thank you. And you want to leave to go to your daughter's?
I would. I shall return. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And you wanted to read the...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I just make a statement too? I just would like to thank everybody involved in bringing us to this place. And I feel that our policies really will go far to ensuring that right to know is valid. It makes them more understandable to us and the public. I think it's all our intentions, everyone on the board, to follow right to know and to, it's our obligation to know it as much as we can. And I think we've made a wonderful effort since I've been on the board and seen those efforts to adhere to that policy. And I think we all want to do that as best as we can. But I thank everyone for bringing about this settlement.
Thanks, Kenny. So just in terms of the public and making sure that everybody does know, Mr. David Taylor did withdraw his petition for contempt against the board, a board member in the school board with the Stratford County Superior Court, a case that David had filed because he was concerned that the right to know may have been violated. And I just want to read into the record the agreements so everybody knows what it was. So, "Whereas the parties wish to amicably resolve this matter to avoid unnecessary expense to the taxpayers of the district and to avoid any appearance of impropriety concerning email communications in the future, now therefore in exchange for this mutual covenants contained herein, the parties agree as follows. One, at a board meeting on January 8th, 2014, the school board shall vote on the adoption of the amendments to boards following existing policies affecting the public's right to know. The policies listed are BBAA, School Board Member Authority, BDB, Board Officers, Board Organization, BDE, Committees and Delegations, BDAF, Advisory Committees to the Board, BDG, the School Attorney, BEA, Regular Board Meetings, BEC, Non-Public Sessions, BEDD, Rules of Order, BEDG, Minutes, BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings, and BHE, School Board Use of Email. Two, due to the timing of the settlement and the pending court hearing currently scheduled for January 30th, the parties agree that the board's petition practice of holding two readings on the policy amendments can and should be waived in this instance. Three, at meeting, at said meeting, Board Member Turnbull will state publicly that she understands that her email could be interpreted as contrary to right to know. And four, that the board's adoption of the above referenced amended policies and settlement statement by Board Member Turnbull, Mr. Taylor, shall file with the Stratford County Superior Court a notice of dismissal without prejudice of the petition for contempt so that no further action will be taken in said matter on or by Friday, January... can't read the date we put down. This Friday. And Mr. Taylor would be reimbursed for his filing fees. I am pleased to report that Mr. Taylor has withdrawn his petition. And as a result of this work and board action, this lawsuit has been withdrawn. So, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we go to the public comment.
I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. I wanted to talk about the Mohermit Warren article to build two classrooms. Like I said yesterday, I don't think we should do it. By the time we paid it off, we'll be, according to predictions, around 160 students down at Mohermit, which I think is at least six classrooms. So, instead, a while ago, I suggested that we just offer people at Mohermit who wanted to go transportation to Mastway. And, you know, if they took it, well, good, that would lessen the overcrowding. And if they didn't take it, well, then they've chosen the overcrowding. And either way, we've sort of done our job. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Lindsay Rains. I'm from Manbury. My daughter Ava is a third grader at Mohermit Elementary School. This morning, there was yet another school shooting, and we continue to pretend that our children are protected by a locked glass door. Last night, I came before the board to request a resource officer from Mohermit and to express concerns I have following a conversation with Director Morse. I had called him to ask why the middle school and high school have a resource officer but not us. The takeaway from the conversation was this, that while there is general public support for this opinion, it is a question of equity. Lee and Manbury are different towns, however, the same school district. Therefore, one school cannot have what the other does not. And Lee PD does not currently feel the need for a resource officer. It was also impressed upon me that the general sentiment was that because both police departments were so close to the schools, that response time would be swift in event of emergency. To that, I would like to say, we keep AEDs, we keep defibrillators handy in school because we know that seconds matter. Seconds save lives. We need to apply the same thought to caring for our children. I would also like to mention, and let me say, that while we are the same school district, we are two very different towns. Lee has a full-time police department. Manbury has part-time PD. And we have modulators that, no matter how you slice it, are just not as safe as being in the building. Let me be clear about what I am asking for. One, perhaps we should better call it a security officer. I am not talking about someone who's going to have fun in the library. I am talking about someone who is a trained responder, who is ever vigilant, who knows what to do in event of emergency, who is going to know greet the kids in the hall and know who's coming through the door. I am also asking for a committee to study safety in schools and implement best practices, a committee to be formed of parents like myself, teachers, first responders, and a school board member. I am also suggesting that because this is such a large matter, that perhaps a vote of the towns is best. To those, the few rumblings that I have heard, that this security officer would be tantamount to living in a police state, let me say this. We already live in a fear state. We lock the door. We practice lockdowns. Why do we do these things? Because we are afraid of the worst. And if we are afraid of the worst, we plan for the worst. And if my beautiful daughter Ava is murdered at school, what will you tell me? Will you tell me, "We locked the door. We didn't think it could happen here. It just wasn't equitable." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent's curriculum. Carolyn.
Good evening. My name's Carolyn Eastman. I'm the Assistant Superintendent. I wanted to give an update. This is kind of, it's about the PTO. I had three PTO meetings that I attended in November, one at Mastway, one at Mohermit, and one at the middle school. And the discussion was focused around Common Core, but it was also focused around a topic of our new progress reports. In kindergarten through fifth grade, in a couple weeks, we will be using Power School, just like in the middle schools, grade six through 12, to report progress of students. The difference between how we're using it six through 12, we use it for number grades or letter grades. In grades K through five, we'll be using it for a true standards-based progress report, where the actual standards for math, English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Science will be given a one, a two, or a three, beginning, one equal to beginning, progress toward the standard. A two is developing progress within the standard, and three is meeting the standard or secure in that standard. I wanted to share with the board that not only is this a new process of having a true standards-based progress report, and this is new for teachers, and we're all working towards understanding the new progress report and working with it, it's also in an online format, which is new for us as well, doing reporting online. And I really need to applaud all the K through five teachers for their efforts in kind of getting to know and being open-minded about what a standards-based progress report is and also working in a new format. And I also need to give a big shout out to Sue Johnson for her tireless hours in working in Power School and trying to do things with that tool that have never been done before. We've tried to customize it and make it something that is usable from both a parent perspective as well as a teacher perspective with the tool. And like anything that's new, we know we need to modify it. So, the first progress report will happen, will come out January 31st. On February 2nd, 3rd, I'm sorry, on February 3rd, 4th, and 5th, Sue Johnson and myself will be at, on the 3rd, we will be, I'm going to get these dates, but on those three dates, we will be at each school, Mastway on the first date, Mohermit, and then at the middle school, both in the morning and the afternoon, to provide support to parents. We will be sending home on January 28th, a letter to each parent, K5, with an ID and a password, and also hard copy instructions for parents, and then the added support after the portal's open, if they run into difficulty, to personally walk them through that and help them with the process. We have a committee, a progress report committee, that worked on this first iteration of the progress report. But we are also reconvening in February and March to then modify based on feedback from parents as well as teachers in this kind of interface and online experience. We've already have quite a bit of a list of feedback on how we want to improve it, but we're really eager to get feedback from parents to see their interpretation and feedback on this as well. So, stay tuned. Al.
I have a question. So, those of us have kids spread across the district, you know, when I log into like the high school, Power School, do I have to go to a separate Power School at the, where all my kids can be?
You can see all your children. You can see all your children with one login, and you can add children. So, we're sending out instructions if you are new, and this is the first time you've ever experienced Power School, there's a set of instructions for setting up your account and logging in. If you are someone who already has a child in the school system, you'll simply be adding a child into the Power School system so that you can view their, what we call it, a grade book. But in this case, it's not really a grade, it's a progress. It's a number of beginning, developing, secure, or we have habits of learning, which is consistently sometimes and rarely, C, S, and R. I will say, the feedback I've gotten so far from teachers has been they fully stand behind a standards-based progress report. One of the things that we're really working toward is how to modify that and kind of simplify the language and make it more user-friendly on both ends. Tom.
How many strands are teachers going to be expected to comment on?
Only the ones that they've, they're only going to comment on the ones that they've actually taught. So, when they go into the progress report, what the teacher's had to do is had to discern which of the standards have I begun to address or have addressed in this period of time from September through the end of January? And that's, those are the ones that I'll report progress on. I only will comment on those that I really feel need the added explanation. They're not required to comment on every single standard. There is, in the habits of learning, a really great place for them to put a narrative piece because I know some of the teachers, as well as parents and principals, were worried about losing that narrative, that description of the whole child in the classroom. And teachers have been encouraged to put the narrative piece in the habits of learning. And then the comments are really very academically focused, specific to that standard, if they're going to make a comment on a standard that they've taught.
Okay. So, just in general, what would be the number? I mean...
We've left it up to the teachers. We, I haven't prescribed a number. We've had that discussion, you know, is there a requirement? They said, should we comment on all of them? Should we comment on some? One of, one of the things that we do know that is consistent is the narrative of an overall description, how that individual child is, what they're seeing overall for progress. When it comes down to the specific standards, we have completely left that up to the teachers to decide on where they want to comment, how often they want to comment. We haven't prescribed that.
Carolyn, do you think that it would be helpful for the board at a future meeting, recusing students' names and giving them actual copies of what the progress reports look like? Because that would help it be more tangible.
It would. You're right. Because it's such a work in progress, we are literally working at kind of modifying, tweaking. We're trying to make a lot of modifications based on teacher feedback before it opens, on those that they feel are immediate, and then with those that we feel we can wait and then modify for next year. Those are the things that the committee's going to address. But yes. Kenny.
When you talk of comments, I'm assuming that's kind of a short narrative. So, are, for all the different categories, the one, the one, two, or three will be assigned?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I have a few questions.
But I need, just to clarify, it doesn't have to be a short narrative. That was one of the discussions we had at length. Teachers felt they didn't want to be confined to a certain number of characters or be told they could only give a certain length of comment. And we did ensure that they could put in a lengthy narrative, and we weren't going to limit the narrative. So, that was something we really talked at length about.
But each category gets a number, whether there's a comment or not as to the teacher.
Correct. Yep.
And one thinking from the parents' perspective, and I'm glad to see you have the kind of pre-going out explaining how to access it, and then you're going to be available to explain it, it is very different. And I think one of the really big differences is that you really won't be able to obtain that three mid-year because you're really not done with the learning process.
There will be students that have threes. Teachers are doing formative assessments and small mini pieces to kind of gauge where students are. And there will be students that do get threes if they're secure in that standard at mid-year. The standards were designed to be end-of-year standards, but if a student is already, is secure in that standard mid-year, they'll get a three. If they're working toward a standard, I'll give an example. One of the third or fourth grade standards has, in the math, says students will be able to add, subtract, multiply, divide up into a certain number. Well, at this point in the year, the teachers have accomplished the add, subtract, but will focus the second half of the year on the multiply, divide portion of that standard. So, students will get a two, and in many cases, because of the, we call it thickness of the standard or how detailed the standard is, they're more likely to comment on a standard like that because they want to make sure that the parent understands that we've accomplished half the standard in class so far this year, that your child's getting a two in the addition and subtraction because we haven't, we haven't gotten to the division and multiplication yet in the standard. So, we've had lots of discussion about how some of the standards really could be limiting in how we show progress. And so, that's the place where we've only made, where we have made some type of recommendation just to add clarification for parents. But it's been a really, really interesting, and I will guarantee you, teachers have, as well as parents, will have a lot of feedback on it.
Because I could see it will be, to learn this new scheme for parents, that there might be a lot of parents who really are, you know, were going to take that feeling, well, they could really isn't doing as well as they thought they were doing.
Right.
And maybe another way of asking the question that Tom was asking, with this sort of evaluation, how do you think the time it takes a teacher to do an evaluation compares to the time they used to do it the old way?
Right.
Is there any way to get a sense of that?
Sue and I have been looking at, in November 8th, we did a professional development day. And since then, periodically, we kind of check in to see who's working on it, who's kind of dabbling in it, who hasn't started it. Many teachers haven't started yet. Many teachers have. And just like the old progress report, some teachers started over Thanksgiving break, and they worked all the way up until right before that progress, progress report came out. I would say they are working just as hard, those that have been working on it. So, it would be equate to time right now because it's new. Our hope and intent is that this progress report provides just as rich an amount of information, but will require less time on the part of the teacher as we become more adept to this different type of format. Part of it is format, as with anything in technology, some people are really savvy with it, and some people are not as savvy and as comfortable with technology, and we're having to provide some extra support for that. And we have been doing that. Sue Johnson's been phenomenal. I can't speak highly enough about her and her support to teachers.
Thanks, Karen.
Anne.
I have three questions, and I appreciate where you're trying to get to. So, if your answers are lengthy, I'm happy to hear it at our next meeting.
Okay.
And one of my questions, I actually might put to Dr. Morse during his report. And again, this is, I haven't seen you in a couple meetings, so I apologize for asking this question, but I think we'd all appreciate an update on what the status of the professional development master plan is. Because I understand in June, we owe the state a plan.
Right.
If you could answer the question relative to how it addresses our district building and individual goals.
We had a meeting today. We are on track to deliver a professional development master plan, truly a professional growth plan now, to the state by June. That's when our new plan, we actually have an extension, which I'm glad we did. There are several new guidelines that are very evidence-based and where they're kind of pulling in teacher effectiveness, teacher supervision and evaluation, and your goal setting, as well as renewal, recommendation for renewal of certification is really based on some very specific goals that a teacher puts in place and building, having a building goal and a district goal. That's why the timing of our strategic plan is imperative to where we go from here. Because one of the discussions we had in our committee today was not having a lot of clarity around district and building goals. And it was really hard to develop professional growth opportunities when we didn't have some real clear, strong goals with which to guide us. So, while teachers are, have been continuing to develop individual goals, as far as those building level goals, helping to fuel and build on from the district level goals, having a lack of a strategic plan, adopt a strategic plan, really kind of creates a lot of gray in there and a lot of individuality. So, the timing of a new PD plan, wrapping a nice tight goal setting, and then those opportunities, professional growth opportunities, helping us meet our goals is critical. And the timing of the plan is perfect as well to get us toward meeting the state needs as well as the needs in the district. That'll make us much tighter in getting where we need to go.
So, is that a plan that we'll see as a board?
Yes. Yes. It has to be adopted by the board before it can be fully submitted to the state.
Very good. My second question is, whatever happened to our dual-language credit? Or dual, just dual credit, dual college and high school credit?
Right. We had a meeting, Plymouth State University came down in September and had two deans that met with staff. We've also had several meetings at UNH to discuss potential opportunities and furthering our relationship with students taking courses and having opportunities for credit at UNH. As far as dual credit, the dual-credit option, as we stand right now, we have SN, Southern New Hampshire University. We also have Great Bay Community College, and we're still pursuing and looking at Plymouth State University for dual-credit opportunity. You know, those are the, right now, those are the ones that we're pursuing. Could there be others? Certainly. But we're trying to keep that momentum going for that dual-credit option. I know the high school has been starting to create a list of courses that they'd be interested, and staff that would be interested in being in that position. One requirement is that they are certified in the area that they're going to be teaching, the dual-credit. And from PSU, the dual-credit wouldn't come, it wouldn't be a college-level high school credit. It would actually be a, they would get a transcript from Plymouth State University. The credit would be paid toward them, and they would have a separate, while they'd be getting, meeting a high school requirement, they'd be getting a PSU transcript, so it wouldn't be somehow watered down, if you will, as just college-level coursework.
I hope that, I really hope that we're able to follow through with this. I just did some research, and Exeter High School has a dual enrollment program with Southern New Hampshire University, Great Bay Community College, and the Seacoast School of Technology. And that's such an opportunity for our students that if we could make that happen, it's...
I agree. I really love the opportunity it provides. I think we need to provide multiple opportunities for students. We already see students taking advantage of VLACs. I think we, the more opportunity we provide for students to have college experience and having some college credit, I think that serves the community well, and it serves our students well.
Okay. My third question is, evolves around the .4 position in world languages at the high school, but I think I could...
Yeah, we can table that till...
Okay.
Be more informed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne. Anyone else? Megan?
I was just going to let you know, the band finished, of course.
Okay. Did fifth grade go?
Thank you, Carolyn.
The third grade.
Band?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Back to the agenda. Approval of minutes of 1:814, which is not in your portfolio. You got it separately. I make, Kenny?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting of January 8th, 2014.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Anne. Corrections, suggestions. Megan?
I'm just going to abstain. I was not...
Further discussion?
Do we need to add to the end of the minutes? I think the minutes, I'll get to that point, I think they cut off where we move into non-public? Is that correct?
We should have separate meeting minutes for that meeting.
But there is, there is the coming back into public as well. So, we're, we're missing the tail, and we go into non-public, but it doesn't take us back into public.
Should we just postpone this, send to the next meeting and have it cleaned up?
Sounds good to me.
Is that consensus of everybody? Announcements and commendation from the district?
Todd Allen from the high school. First thing I wanted to just mention is that next week is midterms at the high school. So, I encourage, the schedule's on our website, so please check it out, all four days next week. I also wanted to mention, today at our staff meeting, we had two representatives from ING, a financial services company, come in to present the Unsung Hero Award to our own Celeste Best. She was named for the award last summer. However, it was, today was the day they actually presented her with a plaque and the check. Basically, the Unsung Hero Award is given to 100 educators from across the country. It's a $2,000 grant immediately, with the possibility of also applying for future grants up to $25,000 towards equipment resources to use within your classroom. And so, that's quite an honor for Celeste Best, but also for Oyster River High School for having a teacher that is seen as one of the hundred best in her field. So, that's pretty cool. I also wanted to mention on the creativity note, we have a, one of our students is senior. His name is Dongdong Guo. I'll spell it for you, don't worry. He is also an inventor. He just acquired his fourth patent. He, he's actually a Chinese citizen, and he entered a contest in China for a patent for a water... for a water, a water bottle that has a filtration system on top of it specifically designed for use in disaster areas so that people can have clean water. And he was granted, he won a prize. It's equivalent of 10,000 yen. And in his generosity, he's asked to donate that money to Oyster River High School to benefit programs. So he's quite, quite an amazing young man.
Wow.
Would you like me to spell that?
Wow. Hold on. Yes, please.
Dong Dong is his first name. D-O-N-G-N-O-N. And Guo, G-U-O. So that's his second name.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
So Todd, if I can interrupt you, because this is the place where we get a little funky. Since that is being generously donated to the district, our policy asks the board to take action, and we're gonna come back to-
Yes, I'll be happy to come back to you. He's just, just come forward in the last few days to offer to give the money. And my first reaction was, don't you want to use that towards college? And actually, he has acquired another patent that he'd gotten previously that is actually paying for his college, which is pretty amazing. Really, quite an amazing young man. And I also would like to just revisit something from a previous meeting just before the holidays. I just wanted to, once again, thank Shirley Thompson for the, her generous donation to the Track Fund. I'm hopeful that it will stimulate more conversation in the district and get us moving along. Corey Parker and I are planning to be here on February 12th to help your receptive audience to update you on where we are at with that. And certainly, in my wildest dreams, I hope to be actually constructing something the summer of 2015. So be with me when I, when I come forward with that idea. So thank you.
So I do believe that the thing that we, the step we skipped when Shirley was so generous at that particular meeting was to have the board accept the gift formally. And so I think that requires a motion and a second.
How?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Shirley Thompson's gift to the district.
With lots of thanks.
With lots of thanks.
Second by Anne.
Lots more thanks.
Discussion?
I'd just like to personally thank Shirley. She's, you know, her generosity is well beyond monetary. She is a treasure to our district. She's given so much to the children of this district.
And this particular issue is one that she's been very, very passionate and supportive of for many years.
Very passionate about the track and really supporting efforts that will support our children.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, which we have. Show hands, please. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Veish from Mastway. We have a number of things starting up this new year, which we're all glad to be back at. The first one that comes to mind is, on the 24th, we're actually starting our next, the preparation, I guess it's already started, but the interview-type process with UNH having interns in our schools. And this year, or for the next four-year cycle, we're fortunate that both Mastway and Mohammadi are in the same grouping. And so we've collaborated, Dennis and I, to, he, the, the potential interns come in usually for breakfast, and they visit the school and visit with teachers that would like to host interns for the year. So Dennis is doing, Mohammadi is doing a breakfast on that day. And in order to keep it easier for the students, we're going to be having a lunch. So we'll be inviting those UNH students in. It's always nice to start that process. We've already gone to one meeting, the two of us, to, on the UNH campus, just to do a first intro. So it's a really long process. It's a great process, though. I'm very impressed with it. Having hosted a lot of different interns from various schools, I've never had this type of in-depth process go through and really making sure it's a match and a pairing and that sort of thing. It's usually, you find someone to host you for the year, and good luck. And then that's kind of it. So we're excited about having that. And I know I've reached out to Doris Demers, who very graciously offered to help us with lunch that day, so we'll keep it in-house. Yeah, we do have a professional development day coming up on the 27th. Our PTO is hosting free ice skating over at Jackson's, Jackson Landing. And I really wanted to note a few of the things the PTO does on a regular basis throughout, throughout the school. Some of the events, events that they host are fee-based, and others are free, like the ice skating. One of the other events that they very bravely do, I think about this every, every, well, every time they do it, really. Often, once a month on Friday nights, a few brave souls host a parent night out. And what that basically is, is parents get to drop their kids off at school for a nominal fee, and the parents set up activities for them, whether it's in the technology lab or whether it's in the gym, and they have games going and that sort of thing, crafts, you name it. This month, we had about, I think, over 40 kids. So I'd really like to say thank you to Samantha Heppling, Serrana Skollet, Sarah Farwell, Tiffany Golden, Sarah Minor, Kate McManus, Patty Briggs, and Patricia McMan, Magnon, who bravely came out on their Friday night and gave up their Friday night to do so and to host, so the parents get some time out on their own, which is great. So that's wonderful. On the 30th, our third graders are hosting their heritage dinner. Last year, being my first heritage dinner to be at, I was blown away. Kids have been studying their heritage, where they come from, you know, their nationalities, all that sort of thing. And then families bring a dish, just a small dish, and you think, oh, we'll just have a little sampling of this and that. They have a table that goes the length of the gym, filled with foods from different, and they're all marked with, you know, what country it originates from. And it's, it's really an amazing event, so you're all more than welcome to swing on by. Our third graders do a great job, and our teachers do a fabulous job pulling it together with, of course, lots of parent help, I'm sure. Next month, coming into February, we're really excited for our traditional best week, best week, I would say, of the school year is Read Across America at Mastway. Our staff really, really get jazzed up by Read Across America. We have a number of different things going on. We'd ask folks to mark Tuesday, the 18th, off on their calendars. That is our family reading night, where we invite kids to come in with their pillows and their PJs and their favorite book, or a few, a few different favorite books, to come on in. Again, another event where the gymnasium was packed last year. And then we also have singer storyteller Susie Burke who comes in, who's coming in again, because we said, has such a great response last year. So she'll be in. We invite any and all of you. If you are interested in coming into Mastway and reading to a class of students, we'd love to have you. We're really trying to tap into, I think last year, we had the high school kids come and read, and we're going to be alternate, trying to alternate, and so many people want to be a part of it, which is great, that I believe we're gonna tap into some UNH students this year to come and read. And the committee working on Read Across America has been fantastic, so thank you to all of you. And we're really excited to see the cat in the hat this year. We hear there might be a new character there, so we're excited to see that. But really, if any of you are interested, please shoot me an email, give me a call. Adele Pulitzer in the library is also fabulous, and she's organizing everything. So if you'd like to come, come on over. Thank you.
Thank you.
First ditto on the, on the intern thing. I don't have to give you that again.
Then your name is?
Oh, I'm Dennis Harrington, Principal Mohammadi.
Oh, thank you.
I'm supposed to do that, I guess. We also have the winter carnival coming up in early February and various other things that are, that are going on. We had a visiting author Monday, which was enjoyed by every child in the school. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Board announcements, commentations? Nothing going on? Then we have superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one report, and it'll come up as a motion later in the agenda. You may recall that the board transferred the responsibility for nominating a distinguished service award to a community member who has really done great work for the school system to the administrative team. Historically, this has been done at the board level, but the board asked that it be done at the administrative level, and then we come with, to you with a nominee. I am very proud to say that of those who, on the administrative team, who really thought hard about this and have a lot of history with the district, one name came to the surface this year, and that name was Amida Geiger. Amida has been a supporter not just of the elementary schools, but of our high school, and is, Todd shared with me, one of the greatest supporters of our drama program. And so I'm very honored to be able to put that name forward. And I did contact Amida, and she is more than willing to be so honored at a deliberative session. So later in the agenda, there's an opportunity for the board to make a nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? I have some questions with regard to the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Very brief?
Very, sort of brief.
No, I meant, I was very brief.
Yes, you were very brief.
Too brief.
We received a couple of letters raising concern on the .4 language position at the high school. I was hoping you'd be able to share with us, maybe Todd can, how many students currently are either eligible to take French 5, Spanish 5, or, and/or AP 5?
Actually, Todd has updated that information as recently as yesterday, so I'd ask Todd to address it.
So your question was exactly how many students we have in-
Right.
Okay. Right now, in Spanish 5, we have six students, and we have 14 in AP Spanish. In French 5, we have 13 students and eight AP French students.
So-
Thirteen and eight.
The year that this impact, or the year that this .4 position is talking about removing it, what, do you anticipate, I guess this is an anticipatory question, what you think the enrollment would be in those courses?
Right. I mean, looking typically, what we'd look at to determine how many kids might be in French 5 or AP, we would look at French 4 and Spanish 4. And typically, there's a drop-off in those numbers. Some kids max out at the four. Right now, there are 35 kids that are currently taking French 4, and there are 38 kids that are taking Spanish. And so the anticipation is that those numbers might drop off, leaving us somewhere in the mid-20 range. One of the things that, I know the concern about whether or not we could offer AP, French and Spanish is out there, and certainly there are different scenarios that could play out depending on how students enroll. Based on what happened this year, I look at French and Spanish 2 numbers, and we could safely reduce the number of French and Spanish 2 numbers we're offering in order to maintain AP if the numbers in AP warrant offering a standalone AP class.
I could add to that, Todd, while you're processing. The average class size of French and Spanish, based on our enrollment, is, and saying average, I saw the range is low and the numbers that Todd shared, and is about 16.2 or-
Something, I think that, actually, no, 16.5, excuse me.
Sixteen and a half. So one of your goals was to, one of the board's goals as we developed the budget, was to try to adhere to Policy 2B as much as we possibly could. By eliminating the .4 position, the average population in those classes will be in the mid-18.
Right.
So still very much on the low end of Policy 2B, which says a range of 18 to 22. So when we were developing the budget, that's what I asked Todd to look at, is do we have historically low numbers in any particular area? And this was one of those areas that we have. And so that's why it was presented as a potential cut from the budget.
We are required to have how many years of language for graduation?
For graduation, you don't have to for graduation. Typically, kids doing New Hampshire Scholars, it's three years. Most kids at Oyster River that are, four years is pretty typical of many of our students. The five AP sequence, keeping in mind, by the way, that kids get one year of language for their middle school experience. So for many kids, they're kind of maxing out at the four level. Our numbers, I mean, this year and last year, the numbers in Spanish 5 AP and French 5 AP kind of combined made up about the equivalent of what we would consider one, one class, 22-ish students. One of the things that's still to be sorted out, but I'm confident it can be worked out, is exactly what the signups are in the lower levels, so we can move things around. And so, so yeah, I mean, certainly, there will need to be some tweaking of the way we've delivered it in the, in the past, but I think numbers-wise, it can work.
It's obvious, it seems obvious by the numbers you've shared with us, that we have a great deal of interest in world language in our school. I would be very interested in learning what kind of interest we might have in classical language. Latin is taught at Phillips Exeter, Exeter High School, Portsmouth High School, Dover High School, St. Thomas Aquinas. And Oyster River has not offered Latin, it's at least 10 years. It used to be offered here, it's no longer offered here. I know that there is interest in Latin. There's a program that's been going on for, going on four years at the middle school. I wish Jay were here. I would ask him how many students take V-Lax at the middle school in lieu of taking Spanish or French. I can tell you that this year, there are close to 30 children who are involved in after school, and it's only taught one day. There were other children who were interested, but because it was only taught one day, could not participate.
Sure.
And others that came forward after the program had started showing interest, but again, it was offered one day. I would like to learn from our students what the interest in taking a classical language is. I think we're self-limiting at this point, and we have made all of our decisions in the past based on student interest. So I know what the interest is at the middle school, although surveying those students would be, might be additionally informative, but I'd like to hear from our high school students, who would be interested in taking Latin? And I don't, anecdotal information is useful, but actual data-
Sure.
Confirmed interest from students would be very useful. And that I think in the event that that is something that is, proves up, then we should make it a priority to add it, whether we add it because we recognize that it's, it's of interest to the students, and we do that immediately, or we wait for retirement and use funds from a, from a staff retirement to staff a position. I think where it's long overdue that we introduce classical languages back to our high school, I could ask all the doctors at the table how useful it is to them in their professions. All three of you can confirm that, I would hope, would confirm that it was a foundation that made your studies possible. Megan, you're frowning.
Well, I'm not primed.
I thought this discussion would come up when we were talking about the budget, but I, I kind of wanted to try to separate, one, getting back just to the .4 in Spanish and French and at the high school. It sounds like you're saying that you feel with the .4 cut that we've voted on already, that no one's going to not be able to get a class that they wanted to take?
I would be remiss if I did not say that, certainly my French and Spanish AP teachers are concerned about the possibility that they might be asked to teach French 5 AP together. Looking at the numbers as I see them, I think there are ways to do it that would not necessarily have to require that. It is, can I stand here and say 100%? Because we, one of the, one of the things that's challenging at Oyster River High School is the choice model that we have, and we don't know what students want until they choose it. And so I won't know for sure what I'm dealing with until next month, when choices are made. But the budget has to be developed at this point. Based on past history, I do believe that we can move teaching assignments around enough so that we can offer the full sequence of courses. The, probably the biggest cost would be, like, in my mind, it will probably be one fewer section of Spanish and French 2, which means one less period of day that that's offered, which might cause a few more kids to conflict out of that. That's a hard thing to predict, though, because you just, until kids make their choices, we can't see how it plays out. Okay?
And the .4 position, the dollar figure- And the point four position, the dollar figure for that, do we remember that?
It's roughly $30,000.
And then the, so I think that's a discussion to have during, when we talk about the budget number, to see if we maybe want to add that back in or not. I kind of have some feeling about it.
$31,517.
But I, the?
That includes that.
The other thing I wanted to say is, I think with our budget process this year, we really, we talked about some of the deficiencies we saw in our school, and I think we also tried to even reflect some of what we heard through the kind of strategic plan organizing, and we really heard of the deficit in music, and I think we're addressing that. We heard about concern for people with so-called STEM, and we're trying, we're adding that math position, and maybe that's a start to shore that up. But we've heard about other things going on with math. And I want to remind everyone that really, one of the major things that came out of that strategic planning was also the early introduction of language and broader language experience. And I just hope that that becomes something that we really talk about at the board table, and I think somehow, work needs to be good, work needs to be done to figure how to organize our district so we start meeting that language need that I think the children have, and parents really have expressed that interest in.
You're talking about elementary?
I'm going back to elementary, and that includes both more language offerings and deeper instruction. I feel that's a deficiency in our school system.
Megan? I concur with both your comments, but I want to ask a question to Todd first. So, I don't know, maybe three years ago, I can't remember, there was a program put in place at the middle school where students who were taking foreign language potentially could, they could get credit, I guess, or to start, so for example, I was good at Spanish, I took Spanish, I don't have to start in Spanish one as a freshman.
Correct. Yeah, there are a number of kids, there are actually two areas where students come from the middle school with credit, French and Spanish, and then there's algebra.
Algebra, right. So I wanted to ask about that, and what the trend is showing, and are we seeing a growing number, and if you have a pulse on what we expect to see coming from eighth grade to ninth grade for next year for foreign language?
I mean, the trend is that more, more than two-thirds of our kids are opting to take Spanish, and so French is the language that is slowly shrinking in terms of numbers, that's been the last few years. In terms of, you know, it's very consistent, coming up from the middle school, how many students coming out of the middle school continue on in the sequence. You know, a solid 85% of kids at the middle school are taking foreign language at the middle school, and probably, maybe 5% of those opt to say, you know what, I didn't like that language, I'm changing directions, and they might start over again and say French one if they'd been taking Spanish in middle school. But I would say a solid 80% are consistently confident taking a language. What's happening, pretty typically, though, is a lot of kids have reached the point where they've met what they consider to be what's required in order to go to college, and then they make other choices. Some kids are, I mean, there's certainly, there's a core of, you know, 30-ish from each language that stick it out all the way through senior year.
Okay. So how many kids, maybe just tell me the number, how many kids are going into Spanish two as a freshman?
This year, we had 102 in Spanish two and 44 in French two.
Wow. Okay. And how many kids do you know are taking V-Lacks in other foreign languages or in Latin?
When they reach the high school level, it's a relatively small number, it's a single digit. I can certainly find that out for you exactly, though. I mean, typically, the language most kids who are taking online, at least when they get to the high school, there's a lot of kids, that seems to be Mandarin, seems to be a choice that a handful are choosing.
Okay. All right, well, okay, that's, those are my questions. And my comment is, my comments are that, you know, we have, if we, if we're going to have retirements coming down the pipe, there's, I don't know who's retiring or what's being planned, but is it possible that we could allocate some of that personnel towards foreign language, particularly Latin, and an early, like, an elementary Spanish type of opportunity? I think it is, it's totally ingrained in our, it's part of our strategic plan. I mean, any, almost any parent I've spoken to feels strongly about these. You know, I know Ann wants to survey, but I think the numbers speak for themselves with the interest in Latin. It's really become a renewed interest in that classical language because of the way it teaches the structure of the English language, which transfers to many things and benefits a child in many different ways down the road, whether they become a doctor or not is really irrelevant. I mean, my daughter is taking Latin after school. It helps with vocabulary within the English language, it has a lot of benefit, as does any, and then, you know, of course, foreign language in general. So I think as a board, could we prioritize and say, if, you know, possible, and these retirements come through, we would allow that to be a top priority to fill Latin and, you know, maybe like a part-time Spanish instructor for elementary?
Thanks, Megan, that's a great question. And I just, so in answering your question, I am going to take some liberty, okay?
That's fine.
The, you know, the feedback we're getting from the community last night, though small, a number of people attended, and from informal feedback I'm getting from the council in Durham and the select people in Lee and Medbury, they've been incredibly impressed with the fiscal discipline that the school board has demonstrated this school year. And this is the time where you're in the home stretch, and you're going to start getting the kind of pressure that says, but, you know, you should have done this, or you should have done that. And I really just want to remind the board as we go through this evening that you have been incredibly faithful to your goals. And one way of accomplishing this work actually is to prioritize the yellow sheets that we talked about earlier in terms of opportunities. So I would encourage the board, as you go deliberate this evening, to try to stay true to the number that you've put out there in public. It's being well-received, and as you consider new programming, I think Megan has opened up a door that we've talked about before, that should we receive retirements that would impact the 2014-15 budget, we could reconsider some of the positions or programs that we haven't felt we could fully fund in this upcoming school year. You might recall that in those yellow sheets, there was $750,000 worth of requests, and you were very diligent in bringing in just a precious few, the strings program and the beginning of the math tutor program, and that was the end of your list. So as we have these conversations this evening, I think they were very valid conversations, and I think that the conversation that both Ann, Kenny, and Megan have brought up is, are incredibly important aspects of what we need to do in terms of really enhancing who we are as Oyster River. There is no question that we have some really great ideas about how we could enhance our presence, and we did some of that this year with the strings. Foreign language at the elementary level, expanding our offerings at the high school level and the middle school fit into, I think, what we want Oyster River to be. I think Latin is not a dead language, I think it has incredible importance, and so classical languages fit into, I think, who we see ourselves as Oyster River. But it's an issue of wants versus needs, just like it is with our home budgets. I'd like to have that, but do I need that? I think we do need it, but not necessarily immediately. You've just imposed such great fiscal discipline on yourselves, and you're getting such great feedback from the community that I would hate to see us go Christmas shopping tonight as opposed to doing exactly what Megan and Ann and Kenny have alluded to in terms of, if this is a priority, where's the opportunity? The opportunity may come as a retirement, or it may be that we prioritize this and the retirement doesn't happen, but we know that that's the priority for the next budget, and it does fit into the strategic plan. So I just want to, you know, kind of envelope your conversation this evening in terms of absolute needs and where we are fiscally in this particular budget, and try to marry those. I mean, we're going to pressure later on, of course, to have consideration about the SRO, so there's all kinds of pieces that come at the end of a budget process that we want to do, but then you just have to go back to your six goals. Does it fit into the six goals? That's my caution.
You know, I think that is a great way of putting it. I loved the way you did the yellow sheets, because when you do the yellow sheets and you have the goal that we've done budgetarily, it forces you to prioritize, because the list is literally endless of things that you can add to enhance the educational experience of kids. But I think when you have that budgetary goal, it really does force you to prioritize them, and not only do you do it for the present, as Jim said, but it's like, in my mind now, I can start to prioritize down the future, where the administrative team has said, you know, we need these things, so keep this in mind. So it allows us to continuously prioritize it budgetarily in a more strategic way. So I agree, I think that, you know, when we've come to this point, we've already made a decision what's the most important things of our wish list, and to like lose it in the last day would be unfortunate.
Ann?
I'm going to dial it way back to my senior year of high school, my Latin class, where I learned expressive moods of communication. I learned about the indicative, subjunctive, and the imperative. The indicative indicates facts. Subjective is a what-if, and the imperative is a command to do something. So as a board, we hear facts, we have what-ifs, and then we give you direction. That's what Latin does for you.
Well said.
You got far as a good idea.
Perfect, yeah. I haven't had a try.
Did you want, you haven't said something?
I haven't said anything. You know, I never took Latin. I was terrible at foreign languages.
Ain't no tool.
You know, what I really hope for this district is a whole-day kindergarten and a real integrated longitudinal math program, because math, in my opinion, is a foreign language, is just as demanding as Latin, and we need it. And when we get that, I'll start talking about point four, Latin, or anything you want, but we don't have those two building blocks. You know, education starts in kindergarten, and if we don't get that base plate, so to speak, can I think of something in football?
You don't get the stance.
Yeah, you don't get the stance, exactly. My husband has been trying to coach me in football language, so, Kenny?
And I appreciate that, Dr. Morse, with the budget as well, and I think part of what I was saying, to not really nearly add something here and add something, build something, hodgepodge, I think we're at a point with language where it's been stuck at this, and I think we should do it in a comprehensive way, where we really analyze where we want to be and put the steps in place, kind of like our music kind of fell a kilter, and we had these big holes. And I think that evaluation of taking us from start to finish is the way to go.
Ann?
Dennis, we need to give credit to a committee that you formed and came to a, made a presentation to the board, and we accepted it, and that was three years ago, two years ago, and it was a committee that did study foreign language at the elementary level. That evidence, the evidence is there, the data is there, the work has been done. It doesn't mean, Kenny, that we don't have more work to do, but in recognition that we've taken these steps already. And the reason the person wasn't hired is you couldn't find the suitable candidate to fill the shoes that you were looking to fill. So I...
Can I respond to that? Does it really fits in with what was just said here? I took Latin. One of the missteps when that action was taken is that it was just put out of context. It was go hire four-tenths of a person to do what, without any thought to what that what would be, and how it fit in the rest of the system. So, and that's one of the things we discovered when we went through the process of trying to find somebody. And when we, the wisest thing we did in that process was not hire somebody, because there wasn't a somebody that was, could fit the position that we were trying to create. And we really didn't put enough thought into what model we should be using, and whether it would work or not, and how it fit in the schedule for both of the elementary schools. So what was, somebody, I forget who just said it, it's the same as the issue with the music program. We had a very exciting meeting with the character from Lexington, Mass., who is, leads a program there that is a model. And you could see that our, a music program was a patchwork quilt that happened, you know, and they're real strengths. And I think if we don't look at the language program beginning in kindergarten and going through 12th grade at the same time, we'd be making a mistake.
Tom?
I think one of the issues, though, in bringing language into the elementary school, is that you're going to have common core with high standards in social studies and science and math and language arts. That's going to put real pressure. I'm not, I think, I think having language, you know, but you're going to have a collision if you're moving in the direction of what the common core is asking, because, you know, with No Child Left Behind, I think science and social studies got, a lot of places got minimized, but if you start having robust standards in science, social studies, math, and language arts, and then you say, okay, that we're going to introduce foreign language, you know, you're going to have to figure out how that whole package fits together.
Well, it doesn't. And the superintendent and I talked a couple of years ago, when he first came in, about what really needs to happen is we need to look at the length of the school day and how it happens, and not to put more pressure on kids, but to design programs that can work without taking 15 more minutes away from a math lesson to put in a language lesson. So it's a good point.
Regarding the foreign language, I was fortunate to be a little bit involved in that project, and I got to visit several schools that have successfully put in place foreign language programs. And first of all, I'm sure these districts are also struggling with common core, and I don't think they're going to be dropping foreign language, so to speak. One of the reasons I think that they've been successful with the implementation of foreign language is that they really implemented, they integrated the foreign language into the classroom, and that is a challenge, for sure, but that is the way you learn a foreign language. You know, it's almost, it becomes, because foreign language is a tool, it's a tool of communication, and there's cultural aspects, obviously, that are part of it, but, you know, being able to kind of make it so that the lines are blurred. You have, you know, one school we visited was teaching...
And that school day was eight to four.
Right, and that, yeah, and then even, we visited an elementary school in Hanover, and their school day was longer as well. So I definitely agree that should be examined, you know, how, if, you know, we can lengthen the elementary school day, because I think that would help a great deal with bringing this into the school. But I also think we need to really be committed to making the foreign language omnipresent in the environment, in the classroom, because it is, that's the way you learn a foreign language. You know, I, no, I studied Chinese, and I really didn't get it, really couldn't speak it, it was kind of strange. I could read it and write it really well, but I... was kind of strange. I could read it and write it really well, but I really could not speak the language until I lived in China. And it was surround, I just had no choice, you know, to speak it. So you have to have it integrated into the classroom. And I don't know how you do that. That's what you guys figure out.
When we visited the school that was teaching Mandarin, she was our translator.
So if I can make a suggestion, I think that, you know, the report that Dennis was in charge of needs to be resurrected for the board because it's a couple of years back and a number of board members are new. And, you know, doing a quick survey of the six through 12 kids in relation to the interest in Latin is fairly easy to do. And then I would say at a later point, we prioritize the yellow sheets, add to the list world language at the elementary level or expanding word language at the six through 12, and get a sense of what the board's priorities are. And then as an opportunity presents itself, you know, through retirement, then we could, then go to that list and say, this is, this was our priority. Is it still our priority? If it is, then we can reinvest that money in staff.
I have a question about the full-day kindergarten. My feeling is that this board, I think, agreed that it was a priority. It was a very high priority. And we probably would have put it into this year's budget had it not been for the recommendation to wait. So I don't know what the next board will do, but I feel hopeful that they will integrate that into the next budget. My only question is, from a facility standpoint, I, just to remind us all, what is required? Is there anything required to be able to support that if it's voted in? Like, for example, those two classrooms at...
Right. The reason that I suggested to the board that we weren't ready to do for all-day kindergarten in the upcoming school year is we don't have the available space in the elementary schools. If you went 100% all day, you'd have to have six classrooms, three at each building. But as Dennis and Carrie and I have talked, we do think that it's probably rational to have a half-day option for those families who don't want to have a full-day program. So we'll go back and do that homework as well. But we definitely aren't ready in terms of facilities for the upcoming school year, which is the reason that we pulled it off.
Ann?
I'm thinking about the PEP program at the high school. And I am curious whether or not there is room at the high school to house an all-day kindergarten class and whether or not we approach the PEP program to see if they'd be interested in running it.
And we can pursue that option with Stratford Learning Center. And, you know, I don't, I don't see Catherine in the room. Oh, there she is. She's back there. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll push that envelope and see what Stratford can do and come back to the board. And also work with Todd to find out whether he feels like...
We've got all these Barrington kids coming in the future, so I don't know how much room we have.
So Willie analyzed that.
Thank you.
So Sue Caswell, give us an update?
Yes.
Yes.
I just have an update on the current year's budget compared to last year. We're in exactly the same place. So we're looking good. I expect a fund balance at the end of the year, but it's too soon to tell. Most of it's from positions that are unfilled. But until the end of the year, we won't know how it plays out. Megan?
I have a question about, I don't know how this fits in exactly, but about monies that we've saved from having our sustainability program. Like, we heard about composting.
The $21,000 and the composting, yeah.
Yep. How much, again?
We reduced our utility costs here at the high school by $21,000.
Right. Just the budget.
So I know it's hard to predict savings of that nature, but are we offsetting anything in the budget from that savings? Like, we're realizing that so we can reduce something else, another line item, by a certain amount?
Well, we did reduce our electricity and our propane cost based on that. And then we have looked at, but it's too soon to look at reducing our waste cost because we do pay to have our waste taken. And that's been reduced, so.
Another way of looking at that, too, Megan, is as you save in utilities and then as we negotiate new contracts, essentially that savings helps offset the increase in contracts.
Okay.
So that would be how it really is being used.
Are we realizing any savings in our food services because of the sustainability and the green teams?
Trash.
The trash.
The trash.
Dramatic decrease in trash.
So that trash, is that part of the food service?
They're, yeah. And they're looking at other initiatives to reduce the amount of paper they buy.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would say, Megan, in relation to food service also, is, you might recall, it was kind of one of those passing conversations that we, we could have reduced the food service supplement provided by the taxpayers from $90,000 to $70,000. But as Sue and I worked with Doris, she was having equipment failure. And so we kept it at $90,000. So that $20,000 in savings is now being invested in.
Okay. Because this was a question a community member raised to me, and I did not know the answer.
So the answer is, we actually are saving money in food service, but we're reinvesting it in food service.
Okay. Thank you.
Sue, you referred to unfilled positions. Where's, where do I find on?
Most of it's in the paraprofessional area. And as I said, it's early in the year. We are filling a couple of them, but at the time of this report, we have transfers with students in and out.
An example, Ann, would be in special education, if there's a one-to-one para and the student transfers out, then we give that para who's dedicated to that student a notice. So it leaves that position open. But when Sue says it's too early to tell, it's just as likely that, you know, after February vacation or sometime in the next five, four, five months, another student comes in and then Catherine has to recommit those funds. So when we get to the halfway point, we're very cautious about saying, you know, exactly what the fund balance will be because we still have five months of volatile changes in the budget related to student needs.
Is that at all of our schools? Primarily high school?
Oh.
It's all of them.
It's all of them. Yeah, it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
Wanted to make a plug for the sustainability. The other part of the food budget is getting kids to kind of eat at the cafeteria. So there's been a steady, although slow, increase in student participation in the cafeteria. And I think that a lot of that is due to the...
Better food.
The better food that's being served and better prepared.
You're absolutely right, Ed. Slow and steady describes the high school, describes the middle school, and describes Massway. It does not describe Moheramet. We've had dramatic increase in participation.
Forty-five percent. It's the crowded cafeteria.
It's the crowded cafeteria.
It really doesn't help the crowded cafeteria.
We had double stuffed Oreos.
Okay. So moving on, Madam Chair?
We are moving on. Student Senate.
Yep. Not much to report this evening. Just that we're continuing to work on our Friends and Benefits fundraiser. And we're also going to be doing a Valentine's Day fundraiser in which we're going to be selling flowers. So that's that.
What kind of flowers?
I think we're going to be doing carnations this year.
Peter, don't forget to have the Student Senate reach out to the SAU office and the maintenance office because often you're doing fundraisers inside the building and we're literally, you know, quarter of a mile down the road. So send people there.
We can get you involved, no problem.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports? No. We have the policy for superintendent's
evaluation.
That is in your packet, Madam Chair. And my request, as it was last year, is for the current board to do my evaluation rather than waiting for new board members to come on in March who haven't worked with me for the past year. So that feedback is incredibly important to me in my growth and my guidance in terms of how I'm doing my job and whether I'm, you know, doing the job you want me to do. So I'd appreciate it if the board would take mine to do that for me.
We will. We'll go into a non-public session at the end of the meeting.
So in that particular case, Madam Chair, we would need one of the board members to take minutes.
Yes.
And so that we can find out for calls and adjournments and all of that.
Yep. I'm sure we can find somebody. Superintendent Action?
None, no action by me, but requests of action of me, of you as a board. I mentioned Amida Geiger earlier as the Distinguished Service Award nominee to the board from the administrative team. We're very proud to put her name in front of the board, and it was unanimous on the administrative team.
Ann? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Distinguished Service Award recipient, Amida Geiger.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Tom. Anita, Anita?
Armida. A-R-M-I-D-A. Geiger. G-E-I-G-E-R.
Dyslexic. Yeah, lost it. Okay. Discussion? Hearing none? Could we have a show of hands, please? Thank you.
I know she will appreciate the honor. Thanks so much. This evening, we'll be looking for a motion to adopt the proposed FY1415 school budget.
Al?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the FY15 school budget.
Moved by Al, seconded by Tom. Discussion. Kenny?
I'm just worried about that point four language. If, if it is going to mean that students at the lower level might have scheduling conflicts and might not have that flow in transition, I think language is something, for sure, that they can't come with Spanish I from middle school, not get it in ninth grade, Spanish II, and then pick up Spanish II in 10th for kids that didn't want to go further. That's untenable. I, I feel that children who want the AP, and if that's not conducive to teaching the AP with the French V, Spanish V, I worry that we're going to be hurting kids that have started that language. And I, I heard what you said, Todd, that, you know, that you thought it might work, but you couldn't affirm that. And I, it just worries me. I don't want to see kids shut out from that language path. And I, I guess I want to hear from you, Dr. Morse, of you, I appreciate what you say about the holding to our budget. Do you think that adding that $31,000 back would be looked at as a budget breaker?
Well, nothing in and of itself is a budget breaker. It's the cumulative conversation that goes on this evening. I, I would suggest that the board kind of air its priorities openly before any motions are made. And then you can see what the total impact of the discussions are this evening. You know, I think that the board has an incredibly generous class-size policy. I think that the high school, in particular in the core areas, has been able to maintain integrity to that policy. I think that our electives, not just in world language, but music and other areas, have struggled to even come close to the guidelines that the board has asked us to operate under. And it is your number-two goal. It was a number-two thing that the board collectively put on the table, which was honor the class-size policy as much as we possibly can. So when the administrative team was looking at the various ways that it could reduce the budget, they, they took that class-size policy goal of the board seriously. And obviously, for an administrator like Todd, a principal at the high school, to advocate a reduction in any of his departments is a very, very difficult thing to do. The issue that I think we miss when we talk about choices at the high school is every time a student makes a choice at the high school, there's another choice they can't make or don't make because the choice they're making is the more important choice to them. So even when we have all the staffing that we have, when Todd and Heather are building the high school schedule, parents and students are making choices in terms of their priorities because they cannot take everything that we offer. So the issue really is, you know, we, we, we have sent, as a body, you've sent a very strong signal to the administration over and over again, watch this policy, be careful of this policy, adhere to this policy. And, you know, as we've done reports to the board, we've been very upfront about the fact that there are certain areas that we have not been capable of adhering to faithfully. So the question to me really boils down to going from 16 and a half to 18 and a half is no, is, it puts this, this foreign language program on the same footing as English, math, science, and social studies, which means that kids don't get to take every single course that we have to offer. It puts it in the class-size ratio of English, science, social studies, and, and science. So the question really is, how firmly committed is the board to that policy? Because I've been really pounding Todd, if that's the right expression, to justify anything that doesn't adhere to that policy. And he's been great, and he's wonderful to work with. So it's a signal issue, I guess, Kenny, as I look at it. I don't think students are going to be harmed because students make choices every day, every time they build a schedule. It's a question of whether 16 and a half is okay or not. And then if it's not, then 18 and a half is okay. It's well within the policy. It's, that's, that's hap, that happens across the high, the high school is a particularly unique organization compared to the middle school and the elementaries. Because in order for Todd and the staff to run a quality program, we have to run a program that has choice. That's not related to the current structure of this high school. That's related to every high school in the country. So it really boils back down to what the seven of you mean when you say, stick to that policy. And ultimately, if the seven of you say, we want you to, but in this case we don't, that's well within your prerogative. But I just want you to understand that when you say adhere to it, you've asked Todd to stick his neck out as a leader and say to a, to a staff member, I think we can live without this. And then when we get to this end of the equation, you're saying to Todd, yeah, but. And I, I think that's a really bad thing to be doing to administrators in the sense of telling them, this is our guidance, adopted by the board, very consciously. And then at the end of the process, say, yeah, but in this case, we want to make an exception. You know, I would rather us not adopt the, the, the number-two goal, which says adhere to class policy, if we're going to get to the end of the process and say, we're not going to. There's an inconsistency there, Kenny, that, that would haunt me. I do not think children are going to be harmed because class sizes go from 16 and a half to 18 and a half.
And I, I appreciate that. And I don't think so either. I think when we talk about choice at the high school, and maybe it doesn't matter in this situation, when you, when someone's on the language track, and probably for the math track, for the most part, too, they, they really are tracks. They follow sequentially. So it isn't like a choice. So if you're talking about language arts, well, this term, I'll do debate and persuasion because I'm not going to get British Lit, but I'll do British Lit next time. It's okay. I'll work it around. But you don't have that flexibility with language because you've got to go two, three, four, and then five or AP. Math, to some extent, follows that same linear. Kids mix up the science. You know, you can say, well, you know, I'm going to do chem before bio, or I'm going to do physics before chem. The one thing that I heard that just worried me was that it might make it hard for kids to fit that Spanish II into a schedule. If that's not the case, I have no problems with, you know, bringing us up to class size. That is a board goal. I respect that. I, I just didn't want to see that happen. That's all.
And I don't disagree with the fact that foreign languages are linear by definition because you go one, two, three, four. So there's no argument here. It's just a matter of guidance for the administrators when we're doing the work that you want us to do.
Al?
Well, first of all, Maria, when you say you're bad at languages, first of all, you speak two of them. I'm, it's a miracle I mean it all over the world with my language skills. But that said, I think this is a clear case. You know, we've got that pool of theoretical money, you know, if retirees come. But this would be a good case that, you know, let's see, I, I think we should see what happens with the registration. If something really goes crazy, then clearly, if money became available, that would move up to the highest priority. You'd say, you know what? We probably can't... You'd say, you know what, we probably can't live with the foreign language the way it is. And so that, we would say as a Board, you know, that money that we have, our wishlister, our miracle money that came to, let's apply it to that. So I think to try to, you know, alleviate a problem that we don't know is a problem yet is not a good idea.
And the registration process, Todd, occurs in the next month, right?
Students will have signed up preliminarily by February vacation, and then in March, meetings with counselors. In March, counselors will meet with all the students to kind of talk through the choices that they've made. And by mid to late March, we'll have a preliminary idea of what our staffing needs are.
And what would be the time in that process, that timeline, Todd, that you could feel relatively confident in reporting back to the Board to address the concern about students not getting into courses?
It's, it will be April before we really have gotten far enough along in the schedule building process, we can say who's conflicted.
Can we ask for a report from you in April, first meeting or second meeting?
Yeah, yeah, certainly before April vacation.
Okay, well, let's do the second meeting before April vacation, you'll come back to the Board and give us an update on what the registration looks like and what choices kids had to make.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a question. They're going to still have a number of sections of Spanish two to choose from, if you, right?
Correct.
I mean, it is like you're going from two to one, you're going to still have maybe
Right, currently, there are six, six Spanish two sections, it would be dropping down to five.
There's still a fair range to choose from during the day, I would think. You talk about, some people may have, but it's not like you're contracting to such a small number that it's going to be hard to find a section.
Certainly, yeah, if, if the numbers play out that where the reduced number of sections is, is in French or Spanish two, that is correct. A little less so in French, only because the numbers start out quite a bit smaller. That would be going from three sections to two sections, but it's, but it's still within guidelines. But you're right, the range of choices would still be there. We're not going to, kids would still have Spanish one through five in AP and French one through five in AP. Again, on the assumption that enough students select all those that it makes sense to offer them.
About the class size of the Spanish two in particular, since that's the one that seems to be impacted by this. So right now, it's about 16, on average?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
And it would go up to 20.
How consistent is that between sections, among the different sections? Is there, are there some classes that are way, like, have over 20, there's one that has like 12 or something like that?
There is some variability in that, yes. I want to say maybe the smallest one is 15 or 16. No, I'm sorry, no, actually, there's a 13.
The only, the only thing I feel about this foreign language and the class size, that I don't think our policy, IIB, really addresses, is that I think foreign language by nature actually requires a smaller class size because there's conversation that has to occur, and the student has to be corrected on pronunciation and syntax, a lot of different things. And it gets more important as that student progresses and through her learning. I don't know, I mean, I've thought about this before, I haven't really raised it as, or maybe I have, I don't remember, but, you know, we kind of put these class guidelines out there for all subjects, and it's kind of ridiculous, if you think about it, because different subjects, you know, when you're in a science classroom, you know, you have the labs, kids sort of come into these groups. But I think, I don't know, I think for foreign language in particular, down the road, I think it would be kind of good for us to reexamine that ratio because it really does require, I think, to really smaller class size.
Some school districts do break down their class-size policy, particularly at the high school level by subject discipline.
And I think, too, like with English, you know, or social, I mean, classes where a student is writing papers and they have to be correct, I mean, it's very time-consuming for a teacher. I don't know, I think down the road, maybe for future Board, they could look at that and give it a little bit more refinement. And maybe that would become like an R document to our policy or something like that, but I just was thinking about it.
Ann. For me personally, I am compelled to honor our administrators' recommendations. Our resources, whether we like or not, are limited. And if we want to examine what we offer and what we like to offer, we have to examine where we can trim to get there. It's not an endless pocket of gold available to us to serve our district. I equate this in my own head with the grandfathering of Mohermit kids. Let's just grandfather them all, and let's offer kids all they want, and, you know, where do we, where do we draw the line? It's difficult, and I have a great deal of respect for Todd in doing analysis of his staffing and his class sizes. And I need to remind this Board that the state of New Hampshire says that you can have up to 25 kids in a class. We are already incredibly generous. And Megan, your point might, might be well-founded, but I'm afraid that what that would do to our budget.
Peter.
Yeah, just sort of speaking to the class size, as far as world language goes, Megan, I totally see what you're saying, that small class sizes could be very beneficial with sort of learning to speak that language because that immersion is what's really valuable when you're trying to learn. But I think you can sort of achieve that with a larger class size by working in small groups, having conversations with your classmates. So while a smaller class might be ideal, it might not be realistic. So I think we can get some of those beneficial small-class things out of a larger class.
Thank you.
I just want to make, my point wasn't putting it into the budget. My point was just in general, an observation about foreign language, and I was curious about that. I think when I look at our foreign language program, I'm not hearing, we have large, oversized classes. What I'm hearing is the deficit in offerings at the elementary and without having, you know, Latin or maybe even Mandarin at the high school. So I think if we're going to put money back in the budget at some point, whether, you know, would be tonight or some other time, I think it should be looked at as enhancing our programming, not necessarily, I don't think it's, I don't think, I'm not hearing, at least, or feeling that we have way overcrowded classrooms. I just wanted to clarify my point.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion?
Was it a motion? It was just a conversation.
We're having conversation, so this is where we get to.
But would you make, yeah, but we're just at the discussion stage of the budget. You didn't move to amend the budget.
No. So further discussion on the motion?
I'd like to discuss something other than foreign language. We had our hearing last night, and there was a community member who spoke about the inclusion of a SRO officer at Mohermit. This was on one of our yellow sheets as a potential item. At this point, we haven't put it into the budget, it's $18,000 for a part-time officer from the Madbury Police Department. And my understand, and I need some information about this, my understanding is that we did have this person, an officer in the school at some point.
Yeah, I talked to Dennis about that last night, and we've never had an SRO in this elementary school, as we had an officer who was volunteering their time. Dan, you want to clarify?
Yes, we've had, over the last two years in particular, an officer has been coming in as a volunteer and making himself familiar with the teachers, with me, with the, with the children, and actually, many times parks the police car at the top of the, which I think is a good idea. And so it's not an official position, it's like a volunteer coming into the school.
So he didn't get paid by anybody?
No, he's paid by the Madbury Police Department.
But he wasn't, it wasn't like it was off-hours?
No, no, no.
Okay, it wasn't like, I volunteer in the library or something?
No.
Okay, so he was getting paid by someone?
And he still comes. I mean, it's not as regular as it was, say, in the early part of this year in particular because other things have come up. But yes, he's, and I expect that he'll be back again.
I, I'm not really, I'm kind of confused about this because is he there or he's not there? I mean, it sounds like, I'm hearing he's not there anymore, but then, Dennis, you just said he?
He's not there as regularly as he was earlier in the year, and that regularity may increase. There were some things that came up that the Police Department was doing that had nothing to do with us.
Okay.
That took some time away from the time he was spending at Mohermit.
Okay. Sam? I appreciate that when Officer or Captain McGann?
Chief.
Chief McGann presented to us this, this position, that we fund something that they've been very generously doing for us at no cost. I think it's extremely important that we examine our whole district. We employ an SRO officer at the high school who does work also at the middle school, but it's one person who shares this duty. And we do not have a person in that capacity at Mastway, which we heard from the Speaker earlier today. If this is something that, as a Board, we collectively believe is important to have, then it's going to involve not just Mohermit, it's going to involve another individual for the middle school and then for Mastway. So while we could make a motion to add in the $19,000 for, $18,000 for Mohermit, my concern is if that's part-time, how does that solve the problem? It's a full-time problem, it's not a part-time problem. So I think we need more information, we need data, and, not data, but we need to know what would it cost to man all of our schools. I don't think we can cherry pick which school we're going to protect with an armed individual.
The advantage we have in Durham is that the Durham Police Department covers both of our, our middle school and our, and our high school. So the person is designated to serve both, both schools. But I think if Jay and Todd were talking, predominant amount of time is spent at the high school, and when Jay needs that time, the person is there. So you have about 1,700 students that one SRO is dealing with. And so, you know, Chief McGann has been very generous in putting an officer at the town's expense at Mohermit. He actually has been very generous at putting officers at the school, setting at the opening of school. He cares greatly about the safety of our children, and in the end, he decided that he wanted to propose, you know, putting an SRO at the elementary school. I would say, you know, it sounds all very appealing, except that, you know, if you think about one SRO servicing both high school and middle school, that is a pretty diverse responsibility. And safety is only one part of the job that an SRO does. And in your packet, I anticipated this question coming up because it came up as a public comment, and put the Durham Police Department's job description for their SRO in our standing practice of what we expect of an SRO. I also would point out that safety is an emotional issue that, you know, we have taken very seriously administratively. We, we practice, we've updated our emergency, we've done off-site designations for bringing students. And having an officer on-site does not mean that a student would not get hurt. And in fact, I checked this today, Columbine had an SRO, and that's where this nightmare of school assault really became a public issue. So having an SRO on-site doesn't necessarily mean that the school is safer. I think that it's another element that we could say we have, and it would help people feel better, just like having the recent alarm system put on the middle school and high school helps people feel better. But the bottom line is that our schools are public institutions, they're not prisons. And if somebody wants to hurt someone, and this has been said of the President of the United States, if somebody wants to assassinate the President and they're willing to die doing it, they can get pretty doggone close, and we've seen that in our lifetime with Ronald Reagan and so forth. So this is a real, a delicate issue. And for me, the reason that I was very supportive of Chief McGann's proposal, and then I, then I felt an obligation to also, if we're going to do it at Mohermit, to do it at Mastway. So I don't necessarily feel like we need a comprehensive review of the roles as you're suggesting, Ann, but I think that if we're going to go forward with this, I really think we need to put enough money in to at least potentially put one at Mastway. And if the Chief at Mastway still says, no, thank you, I'll, I'll service the school from, from my safety complex, and, and he's been great, the Chief in Lee is great as well, but he doesn't feel that compel, compelling reason to have an officer full-time assigned. I think that we have an obligation to look as a district, I think that is your point. And I, I would feel really uncomfortable if we put an SRO at Mohermit and we didn't have a similar position at Mastway. But then when you look at the student-teacher ratio or the student population, you'd be looking at 400 students at Mohermit and 300 students at Mastway compared to the 16 and a half, 16 to 1,700 that the SRO in, in Durham is handling. And then you, well, then you get to the place where you think, well, if we're going to do this, then we probably should be thinking about it building by building by building. So it's, it's, it's a very appealing proposal, and the Chief is amazing, he's been very dedicated to the school, and he's given us a crazy great price to put. It would be a SRO for the school day and school year, so that person would be there. It's just an issue of how do we get there? You know, if that's a priority for us, then I would want to make sure that we have money in reserves to handle Mastway, and I'll go meet with the Chief in Lee and say, I've got the money, are you willing to assign somebody there? And if he still says, no, I'd rather not, Jim, then that's a different issue than not being able to afford to do Mastway when we're considering doing Mohermit. That's the dilemma I'm in as an administrator, I ask services to the entire district, and so I struggle with this one.
I don't know, this is just an idea about dual responsibilities, that you bring someone into the building who is licensed to carry a firearm, because I think that's, that's what folks think we need, is someone in the building with a firearm, that has another responsibility in the building. What that responsibility is, I don't know.
I have no idea what that would be. I think that if the, if, if we had the three Chiefs here tonight and they were talking about the responsibility of a police officer, they would tell you that their primary responsibility is safety. And I don't think that any of the Chiefs would want their SRO being an ed tech in a classroom with a gun on their, on their hip. Because remember that an SRO is a safety officer first, and they do carry a gun, they do not block it away when they walk into the school, that is their job tool. So they are, it's secured, and they do everything they can to make sure that it's secured. But to ask an officer, say, to put a gun away in a safe box when they come into the school, you wouldn't have a police officer walk in this building because that's not their job. Their job is to protect, and the part of the way they protect is making sure that they are ready to take care of business. A gun is part of their job. So I don't know, Ann, that that, in a, in a practical sense, is, is doable.
It's so terribly sad that we even have this conversation. I do speak two languages. And I am on Facebook with my numerous nieces and nephews in Sweden, and most of the messages I get is, what kind of country do you live in that have these constant shootings? And if we're having this conversation, we also need to stand up and tell our Congress and elected officials, we want some gun safety around here. It's, it's insane what's happening. It's insane that the Supreme Court today is deliberating on whether or not domestic abusers get to have guns. So that's what I'm going to say.
So I just, I don't understand jurisdiction or police departments, but theoretically, if we, because we are a cooperative, we're three towns, if we were to hire a police officer, could that police officer serve both in Madbury and Lee theoretically? I mean, could that individual, because- I mean, could that individual, because, or, okay, that's one part, that's one question. The other question is, let's say we decided we do want an SRO officer at both elementary schools, and then do we just, like, give the Lee Police Department an order, or say, "We'd like to order a police officer, please serve this person"?
Nope.
No, hire somebody to do this, or whatever? I don't know. I'm not like fast food.
So one of the things I learned about New Hampshire is you have more police chiefs than Maine. You police departments, you know, Unity, Maine is the same size as Madbury, and they rely on county sheriffs and so forth. But New Hampshire is very unique. And the jurisdiction issue is very, very real.
Okay.
So the three towns have three different jurisdictions, three different police departments, three different chiefs, largely cooperative with each other, and they have interdepartment response agreements inclusive of state police. But unlike the cooperative, which is technically one big town supporting a school system, when you get down to municipal services, it's not like that. Durham is Durham, Madbury is Madbury, Lee is Lee. So the easy part of the SRO in Durham is because both schools are in Durham, the chief of police can then put an officer at disposal of both schools. And if we go into the Lee-Madbury piece and we wanted to share an officer, what would happen is we would agree to put a part-time officer at Lee, assuming the chief agrees, and a part-time officer at Madbury, assuming the chief agrees, would be the equivalent of what we're doing at the high school with one officer from Durham serving both schools.
Right.
So that would be, it wouldn't be the same officer, and, you know, whether the chiefs would be agreeable is totally at their discretion. So we could do, we could propose to them that we like the idea. I mean, I'm not against this idea, I want to make sure that's clear. I'm just trying to struggle as a superintendent of a cooperative how we address the needs of all of our students and not some.
Right.
And so that could be a possibility, but it wouldn't be the same officer.
Okay, I had another point. I think, you know, I think the SRO, I think your point about if someone wants to commit a heinous crime or whatever, you know, they'll find a way, but I definitely think there's a perception, at least I feel I have that perception, there is a certain amount of deterrent that occurs when you know there's somebody who could be there, who could take you on, so to speak. But I also think there's something very, very important, and I think it interweaves with the whole, you know, the problem with this, okay, with Newtown, I'm just going to, as I know that issue. That situation, that person who committed that crime, he had real issues. And I'm wondering if there's a benefit for students to feel comfortable around a police officer early on, you know, from elementary school, so that if they see one of their peers doing something or scheming some plan, like a Columbine or something, maybe they'll feel, because they've been dealing with an SRO since they were in kindergarten, so to speak, that perhaps, because let's face it, parents don't really always know what's going on. The students know a heck of a lot more, and maybe that could prevent something from happening. And if there's anything we could do as a board to prevent something like that, even if it's, you know, I just, I feel I have to try.
Megan, I would say that what you just articulated, if Todd or Jay were speaking right now, they would tell you that is the principal reason why we would want an SRO in the school, to build relationships with the students so that they feel that they have an adult figure in a uniform that they can trust.
Okay.
And that, if I showed you the reports I monthly get from the SRO, the contact time that currently it's Ed has with students is amazing. I mean, he's touching base with kids, dozens of kids, in the course of a month.
So I think that is something that, you know, if you, maybe starting earlier in their educational process, you know, it has a lot of benefit. So they're not, they're comfortable, they know SRO, they know what, you know, the role of that officer is, and they feel, they kind of grow up with that. I think that has a huge amount of benefit. And I think that's one way to look at it. I know, you know, I did a little bit of my own research on this, because several people have contacted me about this particular issue and wanting to see this person at Muharamit. And the officer who has been doing this role is, has been very, very well-received, very likable, has made an incredible effort to really get to know staff and students. And I think it's a program that had gotten started, again, the whole how frequently the individual's there, who is paying for it, that is, you know, that's a different issue. But I think at least I'd like to see us, on that campus in particular, where we do, you know, have some differences between Mastway and Muharamit. We have, you know, we have classrooms that aren't contiguous with the building, okay, at Muharamit. So I would like to see us fund it to some level. You know, I'd like to know that we're doing this. I think there is a greater conversation, but I think in the near term, there is a problem that, you know, not a problem, but I think it's something that would be very helpful to have now, and then flesh out the longer-term plan. That's what I think, so.
So, you know, if this is going to continue into a formal motion, then what I would ask the board to do is provide enough money in the motion so that I can reach out to the chief and Lee one more time, even if we have a part-time officer at both schools, in order to make sure that the, that the opportunity for equity exists in this solution. I would be very, very anxious if we made a motion to support one elementary school that didn't support the other. And so I would ask the board, if we're going to continue this, and it's going to turn into a motion that adds to the budget, that we consider putting enough money at my disposal so I can talk to both chiefs again.
How much would that be?
I want to echo what was said earlier about the sadness that we have this conversation. And I certainly realize the fear that people have of an incident happening, incidents have occurred. I, and I don't mean to, and in no way do I want to be saying that those fears shouldn't be there because things have happened.
As close as Massachusetts.
But I think that situations have happened in our country time and time again, and we chase what has happened. And we all take off our shoes now before we get on airplanes. We do so many things that we never did. And things are happening in school, but then where do you draw the line? Like, are our buses safe? Like, that bus leaves the school? Who thought what happened in Boston was going to happen at the Boston Marathon? Are our road races safe now? When our kids are out playing soccer on our fields? Is the SRO out at the field now in case someone wants to come and take out our soccer team? It's, I think that, and I've had this conversation with town administrator in Durham, because it relates somewhat to the pool, because the pool issue is one of acceptable risk. And the town makes decisions about acceptable risk, about when is that bridge, when should that bridge be closed, or when do you decide it's okay? How many policemen do we have? Red Sox are playing the World Series tonight, what happens? There's all this risk in our lives. And I really understand the fear, because terrible things have happened in our schools. But I just don't see that as being where we should prioritize spending our money based on the risk that is just in our society. I feel it's, we're not, we're not going to win that battle. It's there. I don't know if I made that clear, but.
Yeah, I mean, ironically, I can remember walking into Muharamit before the doors were locked. You know, I've had kids go long enough. And then it went from no locked doors to, remember we had that little line, you know, that separated people, and now it's a locked door? And, I mean, I understand the idea of the SRO and that, but I mean, along the lines we were saying, recognizing behavior, well, I mean, part of that is with guidance and the rest, that's what they're there for. They're dealing with kids, and they, if something is going wrong and picking that up, that's what their strength is, and passing that along. And I think that we already have that mechanism in place. And I think that adding simply an armed person to the school, you know, maybe that isn't the best thing. Maybe it's really having contact with the guidance and the psychology and all that in the schools to work with what we have.
I agree with that, that there are grownups, so to speak, in the shape of principals and guidance counselors. What we need to teach our children is that stigma of being a tattletale, that should be long gone, that you have to take responsibility for your surroundings and for your friends, and bring it to those people, namely the principal, teacher, guidance counselor, nurses, whatever, the janitors, that there's something wrong there. And that's not a bad thing to do, that, that's not tattletaling, it's taking responsibility for the society, if it's large or small, and we have to do that.
Do you want to?
Eventually.
All right.
All right, so Al, I need to respond to your statement, because they have guidance counselors in Newtown. In fact, they probably have more than, at a more, you know, it's a more affluent community. You know, I'm not saying that this is the be-all and end-all, and I agree with your point, where does it end? You know, where do you go with this? I mean, I struggle with this myself. I'm not like, but from what I understand about a lot of these events, I think, you know, I think it could be, it's another link. It's, it is a deterrent, it does make parents feel a little better, but it also is an individual, a police officer represents something in your mind. And I think having the counselors there and that element there of the SRO, I think it could really be a stronger deterrent in a way, like Maria said, you know, kids, the whole tattling thing, you know, I think it's good, if people feel comfortable with this resource as they're growing up, and, you know, I don't know, it could, it could help. I think it's, if it's, it could, I just think it's something that we should consider, I really do.
Ben?
Well, my opinion would be that, you know, to protect our kids by having an armed policeman in the school is pretty unrealistic. On the other hand, it does seem as if the principals are happy to have the SROs in their schools, that they have the function, and there's this, you know, two-page list of all the things that they do, really does contribute to a sense of security and, you know, just respect for the law and things going on in the school. So I think that if we're, if that's, if that's where we're going with the school resource officers, as a resource for the schools, for all of these other things, and, you know, perhaps their armed presence would at some point lend a hand or prevent a catastrophe, more power to it. But if it's useful for the reasons that it's already being useful at the middle school and the officer that's been at Muharamit part-time, then I think it's probably reasonable to have them there.
Further discussion?
Well, I'd like to amend the motion to add $50,000 to our budget for SRO officers, additional SRO resources in our district, with the discretion of the administration.
Moved by Megan to add $50,000 to the budget to fund SROs, officers, at the discretion of the superintendent.
Second.
And seconded by Ann.
And I have a comment. I'd like to ask Jay and Todd, the amount of time, and you said this already, the current SRO officer at the high school spends what percent of his time at the high school and what percent of his time at the middle school?
Jay Richall, the principal of the middle school. This is interesting, because we're very fortunate, we have a great relationship with Chief Curz, and Todd and I have had conversations with Chief Curz. The reality is, the majority of time, officer spends at the high school, just due to the age of the students. So it's probably about a 25%, 75% split, 25% at the middle school, 75% at the high school. You know, Chief Curz, myself, and Todd have talked before, talked previously about actually expanding that. Maybe we could have someone full-time at the high school, and maybe someone 50% or 60%. So I'm not trying to throw a wet towel on this discussion, but it's like, we, that would, is something we have desired in the past, but the reality of the budget piece is that, you know, again, we have a set amount of funds. We feel very fortunate that we have one resource officer here in Durham. But would it be nice to add even more time at the middle school and have someone more full-time at the high school? Would that be ideal? Absolutely. So again, I know I kind of elaborated maybe a little too much on that, but we have had these conversations for the past couple of years.
Well, Megan's point, developmentally, the relationship you build with that presence in your midst. Some children grow up in military households, some have parents who are fire chiefs or police officers, and I feel like we're, I'm thinking, this is great, there's an inequity. If we're going to place an officer at Muharamit, and we're looking to place one at Mastway, and we're asking the high school and the middle school, I think age is where that presence makes an extraordinary difference for kids, as an outlet, as another adult that perhaps they, I'm not going to psychoanalyze it, but Megan, I'm not sure 50,000 is enough.
I would just add one thing, Dr. Moore said it best. I think Todd and I would agree, the most important aspect of a school resource officer isn't necessarily having a police officer in your school, it's having a police officer that establishes relationships with kids. So someone had said, so when a kid has a question or concern, or someone brings a pocket knife to school, the students feel comfortable approaching that officer and say, "Hey, officer, Jay brought a knife to school, I wanted to let you know." And those situations have happened in the past. It's about their relationship, relationships with kids that they have, so.
One of my discomforts with voting for that, um, what's there, a second?
Yes, Ann's second.
Is it seems to me we're kind of, what we need is a plan, and we don't have, we don't have a plan. You know, that we have a request for an officer at Muharamit, and then we're kind of extrapolate to what it might look like, how much would we need? We have no idea, really. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have a plan, we don't have a sense of what the function of this officer would be in the school. Is this to be there all the time for protection? Is it to be there as a kind of somebody who helps you become comfortable with being with a police officer? How much time? How much time in which buildings? We don't really have a sense of that, we're just kind of guessing. And I think I would like to vote, not to go forward with any of the, any addition, but to have, authorize a plan where we come in with, so we can understand, and then move forward, you know, after, once we understand what the needs are, what a good plan would be. Just to pull a number out of the air, 50,000, and say we're going to go with that, that just seems to me to be not a wise way to go forward.
Technically, you really can't add it at this point. You can take it away, but you can't add it. You could at deliberative, because you'd have to have another public hearing at this point.
We can't add it tonight?
No, you really can't.
Thank you. But we can't at deliberative.
Yeah, I just want to speak to what you were saying, that the speaker who spoke earlier in public comment, she suggested that we look into forming a committee for researching safety in schools. So I think that might be a positive step forward that we could take before jumping right into hiring officers. So I think there's some research that needs to be done, and we can definitely get on that in the near future.
Thank you. Don't we have a safety plan?
We do. And it's got community involvement, but part of the safety plan didn't entertain adding additional SROs.
Megan?
I did a little bit of research to learn more about SROs, and there are, not surprisingly, the demand for SROs in this country has skyrocketed. And there are, there is an National SRO Association, I think, or something like that.
There is, yeah.
And I went on their website today, and I learned that there are a number, there's, it's incredible, you know, this is an area I don't know a great deal about, but there are some ongoing seminars and training. And I'm not sure right now in our budget, again, I guess this has to be brought up at the deliberative, but, you know, I think it would be great, just like we invest, so let's say we have a program, we have SROs right now, but are they, you know, is it our responsibility as a district to help them, you know, go to these training sessions? Because it seems like there's Because it seems like there's tactics, there's, there's always evolving new good ways of doing their job, and I want to, I think there's a lot of learning. I, I tend to disagree, you know, you're describing like the bad things that happen and, you know, and the overreaction, but we also learn from what's happened. And, and, you know, if this could be a way for a troubled student to get help, to prevent a massacre, I really think we should look at it. You know, we look at helping children in a lot of different ways, and, you know, it's, we, we do more than just, you know, educate, you know, reading, writing in our schools. And I think this is a piece that if we can learn from it and help in the long run, I think it's something we should do, and hopefully some will add it in budget at deliberative.
Just, I, I wasn't saying we were overreacting. I was saying we're realistically reacting, but we can't react enough. But I, I think looking at the SRO position as well, certainly the, the role is very different as you age up. The, the role in elementary and, you know, the, the issue of drug and alcohol comes in middle school, high school. I, I think one piece that's not at this table is the incredible programs that guidance is doing, and Al brought it up, and I talked to Paula Roy at one of our wellness meetings, and she presented the workshops they're doing with the kids that we, you know, that is, that issue. And Newtown wasn't a student. It was someone who was, I think in their twenties, who was not connected to the school. So it wasn't a failure of the school at that point. It wasn't someone who was in contact with the school. And I, I think that our guidance and our teachers really, it's amazing how on top of a lot of our kids they are. Kids fall through cracks, but not all.
Student who did this, did go to Newtown schools.
Did go, but was gone, but gone from the school and, you know, wasn't, you know, it.
Well, you know, I could tell other stories as well. I'm sure we all could. There was a student, I mean, I have other stories, and I do think there is a need, and that's why I'm pushing for it, you know? I don't also say, I don't want to be a dead.
I respect that.
I'm sorry. It's very, it's close to my heart, so.
So this is something that could be, we could act on in a deliberative session, but I think unless somebody's going to, has a motion to take, to reduce the budget, we, you know, which we can do, we can't add to it, so I wonder if we could vote on it.
I'll withdraw my motion, my amendment, or whatever.
Is there an objection on the board for them to draw? Thank you. Did you have an objection?
No, no.
I'd like to vote.
Okay. Yes, or any further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? That's seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
The next motion, it asked the board for, Madam Chair, is a motion to approve the default budget.
Al.
Motion to approve the default budget.
Led by Al, seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. Motion to approve warrant articles, assigned presentations.
Okay, so we do want to stop again and go through these. We've made some adjustments to the warrant articles that you originally presented, and I'm going to have Sue go through them, and if you have questions.
Well, one of the things you had requested was to make some adjustments, and things that we can't do. I gave you all a copy of the update. One of the things we did was we added an explanation to Article Four, if you had time to look at that. And we can have.
And we also changed the dollar amount from 500,000 to 600,000.
To 600,000.
Because of the question that was asked last night in public session. And the question was, does Article Six have to pass in conjunction with Article Four in order to have the revenue necessary to do the cafeteria project? And my answer last night was yes, but then when Sue and I were talking about that very question last night and this morning, we thought, oh, wait a minute, the way that reads, even if the Article Six passed, we wouldn't be able to apply that revenue to that warrant because it says not to exceed 500,000. So it will definitely not exceed 600,000, and still, we would definitely want Article Six to pass so that we have the flexibility using that fund, those funds on this project and/or the middle school heating units and so forth, as we described. So we have the explanation that's new, and we changed that number to 600. It's still not money that has to be raised by taxpayers because it's already been raised by taxpayers. It's just getting permission from the taxpayers to use the settlement money from LGC to do the Mohermit Cafeteria Project.
So there's 600,000 in the settlement money that can be used?
There's 500,000 in the settlement money that can be used, but when you go to Article Six and that 98,000 is released, it gives us the total of 600,000. We think the project, based on our current estimates, is a 550,000 project. Until we go out to bid, we don't know whether that number is high or low.
Okay, just to follow up. So hypothetically, although I don't think this would happen, suppose Four passes and Six doesn't pass, wouldn't you be short money, wouldn't we be short some money to do the project?
We would be, but at that point, we would be very, very close, and I would expect you guys to say, dig into the current budget and figure out how you make up the difference. Though, the easier solution is both warrant articles pass.
Ann, if the bids came in much lower than you anticipated, would you have the flexibility of increasing the size of the addition?
That comes up under the more controversial article in terms of the additional classroom space?
No. Oh, no, I mean, I mean the cafeteria gym.
Yes, yeah. So, yeah, so my answer is the right answer, because I called the architect today, and I said, I think we've overestimated the cost of the classrooms. And he said, well, why do you think that? And I said, because we're not adding a gymnasium size in height, you're adding a classroom size. And he said, you're absolutely right. So he adjusted that number down to approximately 225,000. And then I said, if we added 10 extra feet to the proposed proposal, what would that add? And he said, well, you're not adding another wall, you're adding 10 feet of sidewall and 10 feet of floor. His best guess would be about 80,000. So that article that raises money to do the classrooms actually is enough money to not only do the classrooms, but also enlarge the size of the cafeteria by another 10 feet.
Did he indicate what the cost savings was by doing the projects at the same time?
Yeah, I had that conversation with him as well, and it's, it's more opportunity savings. For example, if you have a construction manager who's doing the work that we have currently proposed without the additional classrooms, it's going to be a set number of dollars. But if we add the classrooms, it wouldn't increase that cost at all. It's the cost of a contractor setting up to do concrete and setting up to do groundwork and setting up to do construction. With the two additional classrooms, you wouldn't pay that again, because it's all, all part of the project. The smaller the project, the larger the fee is in ratio to the project, the larger the product, project, the smaller the fee. And that kind of makes sense if you think about what I just said in terms of economy and scale. So it doesn't necessarily come out in terms of changing the dollar figure. It comes out in terms of not have to pay for something twice. And then, then there's the added component of not disrupting the classroom, the building more than once. I mean, it's the same area, Dennis wouldn't have to do this in two different settings, they would do it all at once, and it's the least intrusive into the daily life of our students and staff. So if the board considers that, those are the opportunity costs that exist if you did it now. And then the other piece that I would throw out is look at the change in prices of construction that Newmarket is seeing. You know, when Sue was there as their business manager, the cost of a new high school was $30,000.
Thirty.
A number they're using, five years later, is $50,000.
Eight percent a year ago.
So construction costs will only go up. So I kind of blended two articles in order to give you the answer in three articles. If we talk about Toms, and I don't want to confuse the issue, but the article in front of you, we just raised that limit to make sure that we had adequate funding to do the project by utilizing the other warrant letter. And I want to thank Denise for her astute question last night. That caused us all to think overnight.
I just had a question about the wording of Article Four, where we're stating in the explanation that we'll be having available to us 500,000 from the LGC settlement. In the body of Article Four, we say that the entire cost won't exceed 600,000, would that amount to come from the unexpected appropriations in the budget from that insurance? But if it's greater than 500,000, some of that's going to come from elsewhere, not to the LGC.
And that's right. And that's in the explanation.
Explanation.
I mean, you could add, I mean, as I was already saying, it should say local government center and capital improvement fund. They want to put that in the body of the thing.
Right, because the way that, just the article reads.
Can we make that amendment, Sue?
So you're talking about in the actual article?
Yeah.
I think we need to, because it, as the article reads, it might not be true.
I think your best bet is to do that, make that amendment at your deliberative session, so that it's done publicly, so we can adjust that article verbiage.
Do you see what I'm saying, though?
I do see what you're saying. I do see what you're saying.
You know, that first 500,000 is going to come from LGC, anything above that will be coming from.
I think that when we do assignments later on with warrant articles that each of you are going to do, I would encourage that Article Four and Article Six be done by the same board member, because they are so tied together. And then I think that gives us the opportunity to have that conversation at deliberative session, Kenny?
Okay.
Is that an okay?
Yeah, I just.
To proceed.
I was asking, really, just for advice.
So are we set with Article Four?
Yeah, I think so. I think that we'll take your advice and see if we can get it amended at deliberative And Article Five is the more controversial warrant article related to additional space, and this does raise taxes, so it does require a three-fifth vote. And I know that the board is not cued in on this one yet, so I'm anxious to know where you want to take it.
Did you say something about full-day kindergarten in those classrooms? I mean, is there any, is there any drawback or advantage to having those classrooms as far as getting to full-day kindergarten?
I think that it adds flexibility sooner, and that's about as much as I would say, but I don't think we're doing it specifically for all-day kindergarten. I think we're doing it to create more flexibility in the classroom wings to accommodate our current needs. I'm not arguing at all that the enrollment is going to decline over time at the elementary schools. I guess what I'm arguing is having the two classrooms outside of the academic wing, art and OTPT, makes more sense in terms of providing flexibility within the academic wings. But, you know, the, the issue is indeed that we would expect our elementary enrollment to decline in, in the upcoming future.
I think that's the question that's going to come up, certainly the question I have about Article Five, is you have a projected, not just a decline, but a really rapid decline, dramatic decline in the elementary school population in the next seven or eight years, down to the low 500s, from 700 to low 500s. So you're going to have excess space, as is. You know, it may take you longer to get it there, you know, than if you had those two classrooms, but you're going to have, you're going to have empty classrooms. And so to, to add to our facilities at a time when we're anticipating very soon this decline, if we believe the numbers that the Long Range Planning Committee, and you're, you know, and then you say, well, maybe you can bring in the fifth grade back, but then the middle school's going to be smaller too, and you're going to have all kinds of space in the middle school. So, I mean, it seems like we're moving to a situation of really excess space. And to ask taxpayers to pay, you know, I mean, it's probably a good deal, and I realize it's in opportune time. If you wanted to build, this would be an opportune time, but I just don't see the, the compelling case to build, given, given the numbers.
Al.
So, you know, I hate to revisit the redistricting, because I'm suffering from post-traumatic stress still from it, but, but that said, it's like, when I look at this, you know, I can't help but think, like, and I, you know, run through the numbers and looked at the declining, you know, we made a choice when we decided to use exemptions with kids of what we could live with. And I think, you know, to come back and say, well, you know, we made these exemptions because we think it'll be less traumatic to the community, and then say, oh, wait a second, we really need 325,000 to add on to it. I just, I, I don't feel that that's a good faith to the community. I think that, you know, if that's what we really wanted, then we should have made the tougher choice to start with and not done the 325,000. And I realize the space would be better, it makes Mohermit a better fit. You know, how much better? Well, I mean, can we live with the art room where it's been, and can we live with like the OTPT when the classroom opens up? Probably. And it's like, that was why I think at the end of that process, we said, you know what? Let's widen the net and grab all of the Wedgewood neighborhood and try to force our way down a little quicker down to 389, so we open up that classroom for it. So I, I just, in good conscience, don't feel good about, you know, making a decision and coming back and asking people to pay more money for it.
Megan.
I just have a question. What can we do right now at this point? I'm not clear. Are we talking about removing this article, or?
You can.
You can remove the article, okay. I just wasn't sure.
I make a motion, we remove Article Five.
Second. Moved by Tom, seconded by myself, that we remove Article Five. Kenny?
Just to explain myself in the public forum, I feel that the numbers really speak against doing this addition as well. I realize we're, we have a crowded situation now. We're trying to address that somewhat with the way we are redrawing our line. I, I hear what you're saying about a larger art room. I think that we're very quickly going to come to a population in the school where there will be that space, and we can retrofit two classrooms to make a bigger art room. I think this is an expenditure that is, is not going to be needed a few years down the road, and I can't see asking taxpayers to, to do that when we're trying to be fiscally conservative here.
Ann.
I was not one of the people that, that voted to keep Mohermit over-enrolled, and so I don't appreciate being included in the "we" in that comments. I've lived here since 2004, and I've heard and watched people do good work, and what rises to the top to me is the, the group that raised money to build a track. And they raised close to 300,000, which then the group gave to the school, or gave, I believe that's what happened, is they gave it to the school, whereas Todd had, hold on, clarify.
Yes.
We're making a decision to spend the amount of money probably combined with what's already in the fund that might build a track or come close to it, or provide a good foundation for doing that. I have great respect for the work you did, Dr. Morris, and I recognize why you did it, and thank you very much. But I can't support this based on other desires the community has that have not been satisfied, and it's not because I want to keep Mohermit over-enrolled. I tried not to do that.
Once of all, just to. Once of all, just taken, and it has been taken, we support them.
As a body.
Megan?
I'm concerned about what is happening in the next few years at Moheramet in terms of services. You know, for example, speech services that are being delivered in the hallway where everyone can hear it. What are we going to do about that?
You can't do anything about it, other than doing your current practice based on your current enrollment. And, you know, in my conversations with various people in the building, you get different feelings about that situation. You know, is it okay? Is it not okay? Depends on who you're talking to. In my world, it's not okay. But in some practitioners' minds, it is okay, because they've approached me and said, I think you're wrong on this. I just don't think students should be serviced in the hall. But you have a building that's oversubscribed, and there is no additional space, and that's the situation we'll be in until the Wedgewood neighborhood adjusts enough so that the school's not over-enrolled.
I agree with the sentiment of my fellow board members, but I'm really struggling for at least, you know, at least two years, I think. There are students who are going to not, you know, I don't know. I think it's unacceptable. I've witnessed it personally when I'm volunteering in the school, and, you know, I think it's not humane, in my mind. I don't know. I just don't know what to say. I like, you know, I look at this, the long-term projections, too. I mean, the margin of error gets substantially larger as you go out in time. And, you know, is the stock market going to be up or down tomorrow? Does anyone know? Nobody knows, right? And it's not that much different, you know, you look at long-term projections, and I think, I actually support this. I think it gives facility equity more to our schools. I think it is a lot cheaper. You build, you do capital improvement. When interest rates are low, interest rates will go up. I feel confident about that. I think we owe it to these children. You know, for them, this is their time. And I think down the road, it will give us flexibility as a district to make other decisions if we have a facility that is configured in this manner with these additional classrooms. So, I support keeping it.
We could always get two portables.
Why don't we just fill the second story under the existing ones?
Dr. Morse, the classrooms and the cafeteria gym would be completed by when?
Well, the architect's been on site, and they're doing engineering analyses and all of that. And our tentative projection for completion would be in October, November of next year. So, you know, if the voters approve this in March, we'll be in a position to immediately go into hiring a contractor.
And what is the anticipated enrollment of Moheramet that fall?
My guess is it's going to be around what it is this past fall, 407, 400, someplace in that range. We might see a small reduction in the first year of the enrollment based on new students moving in. I mean, as recently as last week, a new family moved into the Wedgewood neighborhood, and I assigned them to Mass Way. So, I'm not necessarily waiting for the board's decision on July 1st. In the policy, I do have discretion for placement. I wanted the board to decide on the Wedgewood neighborhood, but now that you have decided, the time to act isn't July 1st. The time to act is now. So, we have had our first family move into that neighborhood, and they have been assigned to Mass Way, and will continue to do that. So, that's one, as Dennis says so often when we talk about this particular issue, it's one less student that will be there in the fall that will be in Mass Way. So, we're continuing to implement, or we are in the beginning stages of implementing the board's decision. And so, you know, it could be 400, it could be 398, it could be 407. We just don't know yet until we figure out, see what the movement is.
So, to get to the enrollment we want in the school, which is 349?
Hmm.
That won't happen until...
I would say it will happen in the third or fourth year of the board's plan.
So, if we built these classrooms, we would have them occupied fully by kids for two years?
Three years, through three years.
Further discussion on the motion? Are we ready to vote? This is to remove Article Five. All those in favor? Six in favor. Peter in favor. All those in opposition? One. Megan is...
We're happy before.
We're there of God, Mick. So, Article Six is the Capital Reserve Fund release, which we hope to have the voters' support, because that also will help us complete the Moheramet cafeteria project without going and asking for additional taxpayer money. This is money that has been available to the system for a number of years. We talked about it in the last budget season. When we talked about it last budget season, the board at that time felt we didn't have, you know, particularly clear use for that, those funds in this particular case. And this year, we have a pretty clear use for those funds, which is to make sure we have enough funds to complete the cafeteria project. And then, as I've said a number of times, and I would repeat, you know, for the record, should the square footage cost come in less than $225,000, then we would use these funds to do other capital needs that have been identified in our facility study. And the most obvious example, as Sue and I are working through this year, are the heating units on the middle school, which we thought would serve us for a while longer, but are becoming significantly more of a problem for us. So, if we don't use it on the Moheramet project because prices are good, we'll use it on the heating system at Moheramet or another identified use in the facilities plan.
I have a question that's related to the last article, if I may ask it. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would the board consider adding an article to add two more portables to Moheramet?
You can't at this point.
What? That was a joke.
I don't think so.
It's not a joke.
I know.
You can't add...
Add a warrant article. Can't add to the bottom line of the budget.
No, you can't. You can't.
Can't do that either?
You have to have another public hearing.
Can I just ask a question about...
Can I ask about that?
Speak in the microphone. Why that's, why can't be done?
Because you'd have to have another public hearing.
If we added it as a warrant article?
Right. Your public, the purpose of your public hearing is to disclose everything that you're going to present to your voters. So, you'd have to have another public hearing, because you have something new. That's something new. You haven't had a public hearing.
I thought you said we did the warrant articles, because there was so little to talk about in the budget.
That's what I thought. But we're certainly finding a lot to talk about this evening.
Which implied to me that we didn't have to present the warrant articles at the public hearing.
Well, you did, you disclosed them, you had them there. They were there.
False.
But you didn't present them and talk about them like you do at deliberatives.
Therefore, if we hadn't...
You have to have them there, so people know what they are, know what your budget is.
So, you can take off, you just can't add.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
To your left, Madam Chair.
I just want to, I may be repeating a question that I asked you before, but I think it'll, I'm sure it'll come up. But if somebody says, okay, if I approve Four, does that give us enough money to do the addition?
Yes.
But the answer actually is no.
No.
The answer is no, because you're going to have to have Four and Six together to get enough...
You went up to 600, and you really need 500.
But I need a revenue stream to support that 600. This revenue stream is the LGC lawsuit and the capital line. So, I need, in order to get to 600, I need both articles.
Right, but originally, we thought we could do it for 500.
No.
No.
That was poor communication on my part. The project was always a $550,000 project, but when Sue and I were putting together the revenue stream, we always thought that this was the piece that we needed to complete the project. It was never a $500,000 project. It was always a $550,000 project. But we knew that we had two revenue streams in order to accomplish it, and that's what we're trying to release in this.
So, we have two revenue streams existing now that would not require any additional money?
Correct. The taxpayers are already raising...
And what we're asking is authorization to use those two revenue streams together to pay for this addition?
Exactly.
Okay. I think that's going to happen, because it's, you know, first, you think that the one might do it, but it's going to be take both.
But I think that's why what Kenny said is so important, that when, you know, if the amendment comes, it's got to say that.
Yeah.
It's got to say that in that first warrant article, and it's got to say it again with Article Six. Really, those two things are in the same, same book, basically.
But you understand why they're two separate warrant articles?
Yeah. Because it's legal, it's a legal thing, and you've got to ask the voters for that money.
You need two authorizations.
Yeah, because you have two different pockets of money.
Right. And that's why I was suggesting earlier that when you assign yourselves which warrant articles, that whoever gets Four gets Six, or Five, will be the new Five.
Yes, who votes for this?
Because it's really critical that it's one conversation now, even if it's two votes.
Could there be any explanation in Six that, that...
It does say that. No, it does, oh, it says it in Four.
Yes.
I know this sounds... What is the chance is that someone, that it would, that Article Four would pass, but not Article Six?
Always a chance.
It's a chance, right?
It's always a chance.
Can we combine?
Not that that it passes.
No.
Explanation, have Article Four, have Article Five, and have the explanation being for both Four and Five together.
Can you move them? That's what I was going to say. Can you move Article, what is now Six?
We can't see what they are.
Have the right together.
Well, they will be. They will be now.
You've got...
Oh, yeah, now they're together.
Now, they're going to be together.
That's why we defeated.
So, the explanation...
So, I can move the explanation under Six? I can do that.
And say how it ties to both...
That's your own.
Four and the new Five.
It's two different revenue streams. So, yeah, moving the explanation below the new Article Five as opposed to under Four will explain both of those articles concurrently.
Yeah.
Can we do that without, we do that now?
Yeah, the explanation is at our control. It's the warrant articles that are...
And together with that amendment to specifically say, our Article Four, that this needs to be in with the addition of the capital improvement fund.
Okay, Sue?
So, we're on Seven, right?
Right.
I will move the explanation after...
Very good.
Six, which will now become Five.
Then will you, can we put in the next, in the war, number four warrant article, that the amount will come from wherever, plus the money from the...
In the explanation?
No. She's asking if you can amend the warrant, and the answer to that is, we can't amend the warrant at this point, but we can amend the explanation.
But we can amend the warrant at the deliberative.
At the deliberative, you can.
We can amend the warrant at deliberative session.
Oh?
Okay.
And the board can make a motion to do that?
Yep.
What does it have to come from?
No, the board can do that. The idea is you're doing it in front of the citizens. It can come from the citizens, or it can come from you, as long as it's in public domain. So, the next article is the Barrington Agreement. We've put an explanation related to that, and the fact that it's a 10-year agreement with a minimum of 125 students to grow incrementally to a maximum of 200 students, that allows for a smooth transition of Barrington students and provides us with a guaranteed revenue. The revenue would be used to maintain and enhance programs and lower the tax impact. That's our explanation there, so...
Sounds good.
In the language of the contract, when it discusses the guaranteed revenue, that we will receive 95% of what the expected enrollment is.
Mm-hmm.
I would like you to make sure that that language doesn't infer that they are only going to pay 95% of whatever body of children come.
No, no, that's, it's, the language is designed specifically if they don't meet the threshold committed to.
So, that's clear. If they don't meet it, then this, because it would, it's conceivable that they're paying 95% of whatever.
No.
I mean, it wasn't careful language.
When they hit the threshold, they're, they're good, we're good. If they don't hit the threshold, that they have to pay more, if you will, per student than they agreed to.
Thank you. So, we're all set with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
We're good with that?
Okay. And then Article Eight, soon to be Article Seven, would be the articulation of what it is that we have asked them to do in preceding motions related to our general fund, and then Special Funds 21 through 23, which is the stereotypical language that our voters have seen historically from the district. It is legalese, and as Tom said, at the last time we talked about this, there is the illusion that should this warrant article fail, that somehow the district would come out a million and a half dollars ahead. The fact is that the default budget is about $500,000 difference, and it's strictly to the operating budget, not to the additional funds. So, that always is a little complicated, and, but again, this is the article, the way it has to be structured from not just our lawyers, but from the department in terms of getting the proper authorization from the voters to go forward with the budget.
I just had a question on that with wording. So, are we not allowed to put, so we're talking about what the default would be, and we say the operating budget shall be thirty, can we say the operating budget and then put in parentheses, "Fund Ten Only"?
No, can't do anything to that.
Can't do anything.
Well, we did put in parentheses, "Regular Operating Budget." So, again, whichever board member gets this particular article can spend time talking about that particular issue, because you're absolutely right, Ken. That is the key to this, this particular article.
Okay. And before someone makes a motion to approve it as a slate, I will have to recuse myself from the teacher contract with the guild. So, I just, if we can somehow separate out Article Three and...
You could do one, two, four, five, six, and six, seven, eight.
Kenny, we were counting on you being the spokesman.
Does he have to recuse himself, considering that the vote has already been approved, and it has to go on the report?
I would feel more comfortable not being involved in that at all.
Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article, warrant Article One. Oh, excuse me. Why don't I just do, I'd like to make a motion to approve our warrant Article Three.
I saw a second?
Second.
Moved by Al. Second by Tom. Discussion. Dana, could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative?
Six zero.
I'm just looking, I'm sort of moving ahead to the next.
And Kenny, recruit. Recuse himself. And Peter in the affirmative. Al, do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article, warrant Article One, warrant Article Two, warrant Article Four, warrant Article Six.
Five.
Well, I'm just reading them off of this. Do I change them?
I think you change them.
Change, okay, Article Five, Article Six, and Article Seven.
Moved by Al. Second by Kenny.
And so, just for clarity, Al, in terms of your motion, with the understanding that Article Five as presented this evening is not included in the warrant article, so there's no misunderstanding that Five is Six, and Six is Seven, so forth. If that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Did you catch that one? Okay.
Is that okay? Are you okay?
Say that again.
You got that in the minutes?
Discussion. Here, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
And?
Motion to approve.
No, we have to sign.
We have to sign.
Well, no, you can.
We can do these.
You can't sign the warrant now, because I have to make revisions.
So we don't have to sign anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you gotta sign. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, what is it that you just said?
They can't sign that warrant that's in there, because now I need to remove. I did remove it, but I didn't change all the wording, so I'll have to have Wendy make adjustments.
Okay. So, board members on the warrant articles, can you here at the office tomorrow at some point and sign the warrant articles?
No. Actually, that's.
Friday, I can.
That's fine, because it has to be posted by the 27th, so we have time. We have time.
All right.
And?
I'd like to make a request to present warrant Article Four and Five.
No objections?
Oh, you're signing yourself?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to request one and two.
Well, I experienced last year with top. I'll do three. I was gonna say, I'll do, but it's now seven, the budget, since I spend all of my time with ABC.
Thomas, three. Anne is four and five. Seven is Al.
I'll do six.
And.
That's okay.
Is that the, is that those two we show up?
Yeah. That's okay.
Super.
With you two.
Who is doing number six?
Kenny.
Kenny. Kenny.
Who is doing number four?
I am.
Anne is doing four and five, because of their connected nature.
Okay.
Somebody needs to do the.
And three, was Tom?
Yeah.
Seriously, I'll do one and two, I mean, that's.
Oh, you weren't joking.
I probably was, Kyle.
I think you earned it. I think you earned it from last year.
I don't feel left out, that's fine.
I'll let you do two.
No, I don't wanna do it. No, slacker.
You can make the amendment.
I'll just, yeah, I'll just, I'll be adding the.
You could do the award.
$50,000, because I'll be busy.
And I don't have to do anything either.
I'll let you do it.
Perfect. Who is doing six?
Kenny.
I'm in for this district.
Got that in the minutes, too? Okay. Because I'll forget.
Yes.
Okay.
So the next motion that we need, Madam Chair, is the approval of the MS-26, which are the state reports?
State reports.
You want to say what the MS-26 is, Sue?
The MS-26 is the official format that we post the budget, and it's all in the categories by fund and function, the total bottom line you just voted on.
Do we have a motion? Moved by Kenny. Second by Al. Discussion. Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next motion is to delete policy BDE. It was inadvertently omitted in the settlement discussions we had with Mr. Taylor, and the components of BDE have been included in policy BBA.
Al.
Motion to delete policy BDE.
And I was seconded by Tom. Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. School Board Committee update? And?
I have a little legislative update that I think is important to review. And I'll make it real quick, because we can all access this information, but it is a very, it's a very full legislative docket with regard to impacting how we operate and folks in our community. The first was HB 1401-5, which is, was legislation to create a fund for robotics programs in schools. Let me get it. It's, was an act to establish a robotics education fund in the Department of Education, and the, there's an established in the Office of the State Treasurer, a non-lapsing fund to be known as the Robotics Education Fund, to be administered by the Commissioner of the Department of Education, which shall keep, be kept, which shall be kept distinct and separate from all their funds. This particular legislation is currently in committee, and it's due out the 6th of February. So for those in the community that are interested in robotics, it's apparently getting some legs at the legislative level for funding, which is pretty exciting. Then HB 1235, which affects all of us as board members. It's an act establishing a procedure to recall selectmen and school board members. This is, um, yeah, it's funny. It has a cumulative effect. The method provided under this chapter for all the recall of selectmen and school board members shall not be exclusive, but shall be in addition to any method of removal provided for directly or indirectly by some other law. There must be grounds for recall, there's a qualification to petition, there's limitations on the recall petitions, there's a filing for recall petitions. It's lengthy, so I can't get into it, but it's something we all need to be cognizant of, that we can be recalled. And all it requires is 30% of the election results during the election that you were elected. So let's say the year you were elected, 500 people voted, it would only require 30% of 500 to, with assigned petition, to get you recalled. Let's see. HB 1201 is the development of a committee to oversee that process. Hold on. It's an act relative to the accountability of public officials and official oppression. The purpose is the legislature finds that Part I, Article A of the New Hampshire Constitution, makes public officials at all times accountable to the people, and states that government, therefore, should be open, accessible, accountable, and responsive. This act is intended to strengthen penalties for public officials who fails to respond to an affidavit, commits an unauthorized act which purports to be an official act, or refrains from performing an official duty. So remember, as board members, as individuals, we don't represent the board, so don't take action as the board, because you could find yourself being accountable as a public official. Scary stuff. HB 1588, not scary, but very scary, is a, it's an act requiring suicide prevention education in schools. Near dear to your heart, Maria. That's, that's worth a read for everyone on this board. Each school district in chartered public schools shall develop a policy, policy committee, that guides the development and implementation of a coordinated plan to prevent, assess the risk of, intervene in, and respond to suicide. The policy shall include, but not be limited to, the following provisions. Training faculty, educating students, identifying within the school the person or persons to serve as a point of contact, making referrals, promoting cooperative efforts, and training within schools. And then there's immunity, that the district is held in or has.
Have these bills passed?
They're all, so far, they're all, let's see, this one is also due out on the 6th of February. They're all in committee.
If they're HB, it means there is a House, some bills originated in the House, some in the Senate. So these are all House-originating, but none of them.
Correct. And then the last one is a bill that affects our special ed funding, and that is House Bill 1105. And it's relative to aid to school districts for the cost of special education. And it changes, the gist of that one is that it eliminates the proration provision for distribution of catastrophic special education aid to local school districts. So, this is a busy time in the legislature, and worth paying attention to.
Thanks for doing that.
Sure.
Any other committee? Then we have public comment.
Denise Day Durham. I don't know if this would work for Article Four as far as the rewording, but just as a suggestion to think about, the entire cost of construction will not exceed $600,000, and will utilize the unexpended appropriations. So basically, you take out with that amount to come from, and just say, and will utilize. So it's just, again, just a suggestion, I don't know if it would meet the legal requirements or whatever. So that was the easy one. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is, I was really pretty disappointed in terms of the new ideas that came up tonight, in terms of adding money to the operating budget, simply because I really feel like that discussion really should have happened before the budget hearing. I'm not disagreeing that those are, you know, important issues, and I'm not sure whether I support them or not, but I really don't think that tonight was the time to be having those discussions, because it was after the budget hearing. And the other thing is, with the deliberative session, I would just caution the board about really adding, because I'm afraid, you know, things went really smoothly at the budget hearing, it shows that the, the community really supports the hard work that the board has done, and I think you really risk kind of loosely, you know, kind of becoming a loose cannon, if you start just saying, well, we need to, you know, put this much money for this position, and this for this, without, again, really, you know, long-range looking at, what does this really do? You know, does this really address the issues that we want to address? So, so that's, that's all. I just, I just think we really have to kind of be mindful of the reason that, you know, that the process is in the order that it is in, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dean Rubine, Dylan Lee. I noticed the last article says the school board recommends it. Are we to infer that the school board does not recommend any of the other articles, which do not say that?
I have a concern about the $500,000 that was changed to the $600,000 after the budget hearing. That seems to be an expansion of the purpose, which I think is also a violation of the RSA, that says you can't add to things in general. What I would recommend is that you go with the wording that was at the hearing, and then you just make a motion from the board at the hearing, and add the $100,000, and add the additional purpose and source, and just be done with it there. Thank you.
I find the wording on the last line, given under our hands, that said Durham. We haven't said anything about Durham before. That said Durham. We haven't said anything about Durham. It's a school district.
It's where you sign it. It's the location of the, of the city. Just give me.
Of course. Then, closing actions, actually, before we adjourn, we're going into non-public session, but the future meeting dates, 2/19, 14, and 3/5, 14, and the.
If I could, if I could add, Madam Chair, the 2/19 date.
2/12.
Recommending be on February 12. And the reason I'm doing that is because deliberative session is on the 5th, and that creates two big gaps between this meeting and the next meeting. We still would rely on our business manager to call the manifest group together as needed, but if we put that meeting in the middle of February as opposed to the end, it doesn't create a huge.
Okay.
Gap between our meetings.
Does it make sense to have the manifest meeting before the deliberative session? Could we just kind of be all together then, so?
Yeah. Sue, were you nodding your head back there?
Yeah, I was thinking the 29th, but that's fine. We can do that.
Catch them when they're coming in for the deliberative.
Yeah.
They'll come early or something.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Good suggestion, yeah.
And there will be meetings at each town. I will be able to attend the Lee and the Durham, and Tom has said that he could attend the Madbury, but the more, the merrier, if you want to give up another evening.
And I would just want to add to those three meetings, the 20th at Madbury, and the 21st in, in Lee, and the 27th in Durham, that each of the elected municipal bodies have, have agreed to allow me to present inside their meeting. So it's not a public hearing like last night, where there'd be give and take necessarily with the public, though that's up to the select people in council to decide, really presenting to them, and the public would be present. So it's another opportunity to share where we are in the budget process with our counterparts on the municipal side. And then the next official meeting of the budget is the 5th at deliberative session, and that's an open session for dialogue one more time before it goes to a vote on the 11th.
Then, we need a motion to go.
Just wanted to, just with the timing, then, with the rewording of all the warrants and how we're doing that, we're, as a body, we're not going to be looking at that again. There's not going to be that discussion.
Well, I, that is correct, if there's a need to, because I do need to follow up on, with council, related to David Taylor's observation, because I don't want to let that go, because if it's a technical area, I may have to bring the board back to make, take another vote, but I will check tomorrow to make sure.
So when, when we come individually to sign, if there's something that we're seeing that's awry, whether it's trivial, like, you know, some of them saying that the board recommends approval and some don't, is there a methodology that we should?
There would be no changes tomorrow. If there's going to be any changes, I'll inform the board, but the issue of the board recommends is, the board's recommending the summative document.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, the wording that we come to sign is going to be developed from what we discussed tonight.
Absolutely.
Right. So if we come and we see that the wording's a little funky, how do?
It won't be. It'll be exactly what we discussed tonight, or it's not. You know, so, if we have to, I mean, if we're on a tight line, timeline, as Sue just alluded to, we have a legal obligation to post these, you know, in a, this may be a perfect example of where you'd have to pull an emergency meeting of the board, specifically to address this.
Okay. With that, can I have a motion to go into non-public meeting?
I'm actually gonna make a different motion, and I'm gonna say, due to the late hour and the work that we've done and the concentration it took, and the importance of the task, I think that we should table that and have a meeting where we take that on at another time.
You can postpone.
Postpone it, just directly. I don't know, you don't know football words. I don't know Dorn words.
So Kenny, you're suggesting that the board have a regular meeting specifically to address my evaluation, because that's the only item that hasn't happened.
Right. And that's just my sentiment based on the hour and concentration, but I, it's, I just throw that out.
All right. That was the motion, it's second. I would suggest that we go into public, non-public session, just to, we don't have to go through the whole thing, but to assign who's going to write, and just the process and the format.
I'm good with that, I'll draw my motion.
I would make.
That's all right.
Question? Yes? Is that covered under the RSA? We're not talking about the individual, we're talking about a process.
Well, you shouldn't be talking about the process, because that's outlined in policy.
Right, so I don't know. We should be going into non-public if you're gonna talk about me. We could talk about that in public, if we're not talking about.
All right. Then, do we have a volunteer to do the writing? And when are we meeting today, this?
Seems like you might be having a special meeting. An extra meeting.
On the 29th?
So I would ask, so, I'd ask Carolyn to open that meeting, since it'll be largely about me. It'll go into non-public, so there's no point in my.
So what is this, right?
Twenty-nine.
What time? Seven o'clock?
You want to have a manifest on the 29th?
More others in agreement, did we vote on?
Well, then she said you can't go into non-public.
Could I suggest 6:30, so you could do a manifest that night? Okay.
Okay. Could we have a motion and agreement to that effect? Moved by Al, that we meet on the 29th to do a manifest at 6:30? And evaluation at whenever we have finished manifest. And that's seconded by Kenny. Could I have, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. Now, could we have?
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Before you do that, I would ask the Chair if she would ask the negotiating committee of the board to meet with the superintendent during this process, to talk about financial issues related to.
I think that's an excellent idea. May I ask you to please meet with the superintendent?
Sure.
Yes.
So?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now. Moved by Al.
Could we schedule that meeting?
Still have to do this. Seconded by Kenny, and on the unanimous, unanimous.